Good evening and welcome to our second city council meeting of 2021. For viewers watching the meeting at home, council members, staff, and public are participating via video conference to assist the city in our physical distancing efforts. And with that, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silence for the more than 420,000 Americans who have died from COVID-related illnesses, including 546 deaths just in Ventura County?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. When we opened our first city council meeting of 2021 with a moment of silence for all those who died from COVID, the number in Ventura County was just under 350. Now, two weeks later, it is at 546, as I mentioned. Madam Clerk, this evening is Ms. McGuire. Would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Angler.
Here.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña.
Present. Thank you. We don't have any requests for any continuance, but we will hear Agenda Item 10A, which is T.O. Arts Update, after tonight's public hearing, so we will move that up. We do have two special presentations, and I will now toss it directly to our city manager, Mr. Drew Powers, for the latest update about the COVID situation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña, council members and staff and the public. Tonight, I have a relatively brief COVID update. The mayor alluded to some of the numbers, but I wanted to take just a quick moment to update you both on where we're at in terms of virus transmission, but also on vaccinations. Today's number: 664 new cases of COVID. Hospitalizations, we dipped below 400 yesterday. We're at 406 today, 83 of those in the intensive care unit at various hospitals across the county. Unfortunately, we are reporting an additional 21 deaths today, as the mayor mentioned, taking our total deaths from COVID to 546, ranging in age from 18 to 103 on this particular count. That said, we are working very carefully with the county on their vaccine distribution. We have opened a site at the Goble Senior Center to provide folks an opportunity to receive vaccination in the East County. Another topic of vaccinations is, for obvious reasons, a hot one. And just want to echo a lot of the comments coming from the Public Health Department about vaccinations. They are building a pretty strong infrastructure and network across the county to be able to distribute vaccinations. What they're missing is the volume of doses right now, and that continues to be a bit of a moving target. We were expecting 10,000 doses this week, and that number got cut to 8,300 doses, just as an example. So as the county goes forward with trying to distribute these out and plan accordingly and release vaccination appointments and so on, we really are hoping to see that volume move up substantially. The county currently has the capacity to do significantly more on the vaccination front on a daily basis than they are receiving of supply. And we hope that that's going to begin to shift here in the next few weeks, and you're probably hearing some of that on the national scale, but we'll have to be patient and wait and see. For those that are interested in staying up to date on vaccinations and anything regarding COVID, your central source for information remains vcrecovers.org. There is a link on there with a spot where you can sign up for the latest on vaccinations, and you can go on and click through that link to schedule an appointment when they become available. 7:30 a.m. each Monday morning is the slot that you're looking for. For the time being, it is reserved for those 75 and older and those in Phase 1A, which are primarily our frontline healthcare workers. As the volume of vaccine begins to become a greater availability, then they will begin moving down the line, and as the state announced yesterday, it will be focused on an age-based criteria in future phases as it moves forward. So moving to 65 and then likely down to 55 from there. We did receive some good news from a business standpoint yesterday from the state of California. We welcome the additional clarity of putting the stay-at-home order behind us as the numbers are trending in a better direction. They're trending in a better direction across the region and in Ventura County. That said, the virus is still widespread. 2,500 cases were reported over the Friday to Sunday period this past weekend, and like I said, 664 today. So those numbers are trending in a much better direction, and the hospitalizations and the ICU capacity, which are key criteria, are looking better. For us at the local level, pressure being felt by all of our businesses weighs on all of us, so to have outdoor dining available and return, those personal care services available to start up again are very important for our small business sector. And they, I think, relieve a lot of pressure and frustration across the board, so that was welcome news. With that, just want to end by reminding folks, vcrecovers.org. There is a link there to sign up for the latest on vaccinations. If you are in one of those age categories, 75 and older attempting to get vaccinations, 7:30 in the morning on Monday mornings, so when they release that. The time slots and appointments will be based on availability of vaccine doses for that week. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Let me, one second, I do have a screen in front of me, so any council members who would like to say, just raise your hand on your screen, and then I will call on you. Yes, I think we have council member, well, I think councilmember McNamie was first, but go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I received some very positive reports about the vaccination center at the Ventura County Fairgrounds. The appointments were made online by some folks that I know, and they went up there and were treated very promptly and efficiently, and it went quite well for them. My question on our center here in the East County at the Goble Center, when, is that up and operating now, or what are we looking at time-wise there for Mr. Powers?
It is up and operating now. The challenge is, like I said, the doses and the volume there. They intend to have a capacity, when fully operational, to do up to 500 shots a day. So, but again, that will depend, the amount and availability that's distributed to that center will be based on the total volume.
So maybe residents of Thousand Oaks might try Goble first, and if they can't get there, they would try the fairgrounds, I presume, yes?
Yeah, it'll provide you with those opportunities when you're registering on the site.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember McNamie.
Just want to dovetail on councilmember Adam's question. Mr. Power, I had someone inform me from the community that they looked at the Goble Center to see how many people were actually there waiting to get a vaccinations. Have they used all the vaccinations that were available this last Saturday, or were we under volume to use up all the capacity we had? And if that's the case, what can we do as a city to inform the public that that's available to a certain group?
My understanding, and I don't have specific data from Saturday, councilmember McNamie, but I, and I can certainly pose that question to the county, but my understanding on a global basis is that they are performing amongst the highest in terms of getting shots in arms, based on availability of any county in the state. And so my assumption would be that they were using all the volume a lot, but I will certainly pose the question to them about this past weekend.
Great. My thought was that if we're not using up all the vaccinations that are available on a Saturday, that we may consider as a council to do some sort of outreach to inform people that that's available, and some are not being used, and we need to get those available in the community. That was the first part. The second part, I was contacted by a business owner here in Thousand Oaks, who informed me that we had city cars out in front of their businesses doing surveillance on behalf of seeing if they were open or not. And it concerned me in that the issue of a business being open is a county issue, and yet we have surveillance being done by our city employees on our own businesses in our city. What is the, give me more information about the relationship between the county and the city? Why are city employees being pulled from projects to do such work? And are we getting reimbursed from the county if that's the case? And I want to hear some rationale on that, as well as reimbursement from the county if that is taking place, and how are we able to release employees from doing their projects that are so vital to our city to function?
Yeah, sure. So from the outside of the pandemic, as I mentioned in my update at our last meeting, our city team's role has been one of support to the county, as every other city in the county is doing from a mutual aid capacity. We don't run a public health department, and so our role is to provide support and education to our business community via the county's public health order. In regards to businesses in particular, our role began last summer with attempting to get businesses up and operational quicker than the county would be able to do with their limited assets. And so in order for the state to greenlight a business to reopen, they had to submit an attestation, and they had to receive an inspection. And so our code enforcement team participated in that, dropping off the material, ensuring that the checklist was completed, and giving them the green light to open. It streamlined the process to allow them to open quicker.
of those in the intensive care unit at various hospitals across the county. Unfortunately, we are reporting an additional 21 deaths today, as the mayor mentioned, taking our total deaths from COVID to 546, ranging in age from 18 to 103 on this particular count. That said, we are working very carefully with the county on their vaccine distribution. We have opened a site at the Goble Senior Center to provide folks an opportunity to receive vaccination in the East County. Another topic of vaccinations is, for obvious reasons, a hot one. And just want to echo a lot of the comments coming from the Public Health Department about vaccinations. They are building a pretty strong infrastructure and network across the county to be able to distribute vaccinations. What they're missing is the volume of doses right now. And that continues to be a bit of a moving target. We were expecting 10,000 doses this week, and that number got cut to 8,300 doses, just as an example. So as the county goes forward with trying to distribute these out and plan accordingly and release vaccination appointments and so on, we really are hoping to see that volume move up substantially. The county currently has the capacity to do significantly more on the vaccination front on a daily basis than they are receiving of supply. And we hope that that's going to begin to shift here in the next few weeks, and you're probably hearing some of that on the national scale, but we'll have to be patient and wait and see. For those that are interested in staying up to date on vaccinations and anything regarding COVID, your central source for information remains vcrecovers.org. There is a link on there with a spot where you can sign up for the latest on vaccinations, and you can go on and click through that link to schedule an appointment when they become available. 7:30 a.m. each Monday morning is the slot that you're looking for. For the time being, it is reserved for those 75 and older and those in Phase 1A, which are primarily our frontline healthcare workers. As the volume of vaccine begins to become a greater availability, then they will begin moving down the line. And as the state announced yesterday, it'll be focused on an age-based criteria in future phases as it moves forward. So moving to 65 and then likely down to 55 from there. We did receive some good news from a business standpoint yesterday from the state of California. We welcome to the additional clarity of putting the stay-at-home order behind us as the numbers are trending in a better direction. They're trending in a better direction across the region and in Ventura County. That said, the virus is still widespread. 2,500 cases were reported over the Friday to Sunday period this past weekend, and like I said, 664 today. So those numbers are trending in a much better direction, and the hospitalizations and the ICU capacity, which are key criteria, are looking better. For us at the local level, pressure being felt by all of our businesses weighs on all of us. So to have outdoor dining available and return, those personal care services available to start up again are very important for our small business sector, and they, I think, relieve a lot of pressure and frustration across the board. So that was welcome, welcome news. With that, just want to end by reminding folks vcrecovers.org. There is a link there to sign up for the latest on vaccinations. If you are in one of those age categories, 75 and older attempting to get vaccinations, 7:30 in the morning on Monday mornings, so when they release that, the time slots and appointments will be based on availability of vaccine doses for that week. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Let me, one second, I do have a screen in front of me, so any council members who would like to say, just raise your hand on your screen, and then I will call on you. Yes, I think we have council member, well, I think Councilmember McNamie was first, but go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I received some very positive reports about the vaccination center at the Ventura County Fairgrounds. The appointments were made online by some folks that I know, and they went up there and were treated very promptly and efficiently, and it went quite well for them. My question on our center here in the East County at the Goble Center, when, is that up and operating now, or what are we looking at time-wise there for Mr. Powers?
It is up and operating now. The challenge is, like I said, the doses and the volume there. They intend to have a capacity, when fully operational, to do up to 500 shots a day. So, but again, that will depend, the amount and availability that's distributed to that center will be based on the total volume.
So maybe residents of Thousand Oaks might try Goble first, and they can't get there, they would try the fairgrounds, I presume, yes?
Yeah, it'll provide you with those opportunities when you're registering on the site.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember McNamie.
Just want to dovetail on Councilmember Adam's question. Mr. Power, I had someone informing me from the community that they looked at the Goble Center to see how many people were actually there waiting to get a vaccinations. Have they used all the vaccinations that were available this last Saturday, or were we under volume to use up all the capacity we had? And if that's the case, what can we do as a city to inform the public that that's available to a certain group?
My understanding, and I don't have specific data from Saturday, Councilmember McNamie, but I, and I can certainly pose that question to the county, but my understanding on a global basis is that they are performing amongst the highest in terms of getting shots in arms, based on availability of any county in the state. And so my assumption would be that they were using all the volume a lot, but I will certainly pose the question to them about this past weekend.
Great. My thought was that if we're not using up all the vaccinations that are available on a Saturday, that we may consider as a council to do some sort of outreach to inform people that that's available, and some are not being used, and we need to get those available in the community. That was the first part. The second part, I was contacted by a business owner here in Thousand Oaks who informed me that we had city cars out in front of their businesses doing surveillance on behalf of seeing if they were open or not. And it concerned me in that the issue of a business being open is a county issue, and yet we have surveillance being done by our city employees on our own businesses in our city. What is the, to give me more information about the relationship between the county and the city, why are city employees being pulled from projects to do such work? And are we getting reimbursed from the county if that's the case? And I want to hear some rationale on that, as well as reimbursement from the county if that is taking place, and how are we able to release employees from doing their projects that are so vital to our city's function?
Yeah, sure. So from the outside of the pandemic, as I mentioned in my update at our last meeting, our city team's role has been one of support to the county, as every other city in the county is doing, from a mutual aid capacity. We don't run a public health department, and so our role is to provide support and education to our business community via the county's public health order. In regards to businesses in particular, our role began last summer with attempting to get businesses up and operational quicker than the county would be able to do with their limited assets. And so in order for the state to green light a business to reopen, they had to submit an attestation, and they had to receive an inspection. And so our code enforcement team participated in that, dropping off the material, ensuring that the checklist was completed, and giving them the green light to open. It streamlined the process to allow them to open quicker and get them up and running. As it relates to compliance with the order, our role has been to provide information to the county on businesses that are noncompliant. These are our businesses that are operating under the county order. In our system of governance, we're a subsidiary of the county in that regard, and when it's regarding public health issues, we provide mutual aid support in that regard. So specifically to businesses, and we've had a small number, but we have had some that have remained open for a variety of different reasons, and we have provided documentation of that at the request of the county and provided that information to the county to do with it as they will. And if they're moving, some of those are moving through court proceedings, some of those are moving through closure orders and others. We are not directly involved in those proceedings, other than to provide the information as their mutual aid subsidiary. Now, in regards to reimbursement, the state and county via their CARES Act funds have provided a couple troths of money that have come to the, to the city, about 1.4 million, if I recall, from the state that was via CARES Act for reimbursement, and then some additional money that Ms. Bascarino will have to remind me of the exact amount, but several hundred thousand dollars that came in reimbursement form from the county as well for support of these activities.
Now, a question again, the CARES Act, was that supposed to be designed for surveillance on our own businesses by our city employees, or was that to be used for other resources?
No, your question was global about reimbursement. So those CARES Act funds went to, our cost associated with the pandemic far exceed from a law enforcement and code enforcement and all the other aspects of our response to the pandemic far exceed the 1.4 million. But we have tracked all those expenditures, and from a global basis, those money go back to offset our law enforcement expenses and otherwise.
Now, is that a zero net sum? Do we get reimbursed 100% either through CARES or through the county, or is that going to be a burden on the taxpayer here who's looking for services for their city and not do surveillance on behalf of the county on our own businesses?
Could you repeat that question again, Councilmember?
It costs us to send out someone to do surveillance on behalf of the city, and as are our city employees who are pulled away from projects. I'm asking on an accounting standpoint, is let's say it costs $200,000 to do surveillance on our own businesses in our own city for the county, using our city staff, let's say it's $200,000. You mentioned CARES Act money has come in that pays for some of that, also the county is, but I'm not real clear if that's going to be a full 200,000 coming back, or are we going over and above all that monies that have come into us?
Yeah, so the staff that are involved in this, Councilmember McNamie, are our code enforcement staff. These are code enforcement issues regardless of whether they are directly under the state, county, or city order. And so from that perspective, these are staff working in their normal classification. So from a reimbursement perspective, I can't say that dollar-for-dollar is coming back in reimbursement. Jamie Bascarino shared with me it's $2.4 million that came from the county, so just to give you a flavor for those funds. And again, we're not doing a dollar-for-dollar track on that because, as I, from the outset, it's been about compliance, and our efforts in regard to dealing with businesses that are noncompliant is relatively small in scale.
My challenge with this is that the county has resources and actually a heck of a lot more money than we do in Thousand Oaks. And I would think that if the surveillance is that important to them to build a case against our businesses, they should be sending their people out and let our enforcement people go and enforce those things that are city-related, not necessarily county or state-related. That's my point. And again, the financial aspect of it is that we're pulling code enforcement away from things that normally they would be doing over to do a county job. And I just want to have a delineation and a separation between city and county monies being spent versus our doing the county job and not getting reimbursed for our taxpayers. That's my point. I don't know where my other council members weigh in on this and what their thoughts are, but I'd like to see a delineation between those services. If it's a county service, let the county do it. If it's a city service, let's do it, because that's what we're providing here for the people.
So, so from a code enforcement perspective, I'll just share, you know, we, I manage through our system of governance what the workflow is via those departments and those department heads, and so there is a balance. This is not 100% assignment. We are moving, we have code priorities that are nonrelated to COVID that we continue to respond to. And as that volume increases, and we have to back down volume on the business assistance piece, we do that. And so that, it is, is very fluid from, from that regard. You know, the weather, you know, we can argue about the state's actions here, you know, the challenge, the challenge for us is the state expects the order to be enforced, they're putting their order down to the county, and via mutual aid, all the cities in the county are providing this level of service to support county code activities. And that's been just the manner in which it's managed from, from the outset. Certainly appreciate the concern, and I certainly appreciate the fact that we have other priorities, because I agree with, we do have other priorities. And thankfully, the loosening of these restrictions on the businesses that came out yesterday is going to be a great breath of fresh air for all of us being able to move back to a matter of normality with that.
Thank you for the answer.
Councilmember or Mayor Portem, Angler, please.
Thank you, thank you. I had to get unmuted there. Quick question for the city manager. I have received phone calls from people who are either, have difficulty in getting through on a computer. Is there a phone number to call that they can talk to a human being rather than be caught into a voicemail or in a computer issue?
Yes, so I have not seen the number publicized yet. I was understanding it was going to be released early this week. That is a call center. It will be up and running. It will, it will provide people exactly that opportunity to talk to someone at a hotline and make their appointment. The county, as they were sharing this with the city managers, was quick to point out that they want to ensure that this is something that's reserved for those that really need that service and really need that support. So we still, they're still encouraging people to use the web-based system, but the phone opportunity, I, my understanding is they're going to pull an allotment of, of appointments specific for those people that have those special needs and set them aside for the phone-based.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, you know, let the, let the group know, because the, there are going to be some people who fall through those cracks and find it difficult to use the, the, the computer-based applications for, for applying. Most of us are no problem, but there are some people who fall through the cracks. Unfortunately, those are a lot of older folks as well. In terms of, in terms of the subject that Mr. McNamie brought up, how do we, how do we typically do our code enforcement? In other words, do we go about town looking for things, or do we usually go by complaint?
So our code practice longstanding is that we do not do proactive code enforcement. This is, it is reactive to complaints that come in. So every visit that we pay to a business in, in regard, or to a home, or any of those actions are complaint, generally complaint-based.
In this particular, particularly this particular application of our code enforcement, was, was there complaints from citizens that spurred us to do this, or was, were we just acting as a, an arm of the county?
So these, in each turn, were complaints that came into the COVID hotline that the county has established. County has a central trunk that those come into, and then they're distributed out to the cities for follow-up, again, with the goal of ensuring compliance first, not, not trying to be punitive in any way.
So, okay, I was just wondering if it was a complaint base, or if we somehow were acting as an arm of the county to, to enforce these things? These are complaint-based issues then? Thank you.
And if I might add on to that, Mayor Portem, the phone number, I did just pull it up, sitting here, is 805-477-717, or 7161, 805-477-7161. We're going to be doing some pretty significant outreach on this along with the county to ensure that that, that number is out there. It's a brand-new hotline, again, reserved for those that really and truly cannot utilize the web-based system. County is also working on some mobile vaccination opportunities, and that'll be forthcoming, but, you know, chance to get folks that might not be able to get out of their homes easily to perhaps bring the vaccinations to them.
Thank you for that number. I'll get it out to some folks that I know probably would benefit from it.
And one more question from Councilmember Adam.
Yes, pardon me, thank you. Just a quick follow-up on the business situation. I know most of us know that the governor today dropped us down into the purple tier, which means restaurants can reopen for outdoor dining, nail salons can open, gyms can open, the mall can reopen partially at least, a number of things that are occurring, which is all, which is all good, and will help to alleviate some of the business situation. My question to Mr. Powers, is there still a movement afoot for the three counties, namely Ventura County, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo, to break off into their own region so we can be judged more on our COVID and ICU rate when it comes to business opening versus being blended in with Los Angeles County?
Well, that request was made to the governor. That was really in regard to this broader SoCal region issue that was tied to ICU capacity. It was really rendered moot by action yesterday. That action basically just returned us all to the, to the purple tier, so you're working on a county-by-county basis. It returns to those original metrics that we were dealing with. So from that standpoint, that request has really kind of been rendered moot as we took the whole state out of the stay-home.
I see. All right, well, obviously, the quicker we get through these tiers, the better. So, but it has to be balanced against our vulnerability to COVID. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Just wanted to emphasize that gyms and fitness centers are indeed open, but only for operations outdoors is my understanding. Then also what I wanted to say is that Ventura County Public Health has issued an alert that there are unfortunately, and of course, people taking advantage of the vaccine in a very nefarious way, namely advertising for vaccines, collecting money upfront, and when you show up, there is no vaccine clinic. Vaccines in Ventura County and elsewhere are completely free. If anyone asks you for money, then that is not a legitimate operation. Ventura County Public Health wants to make sure that you are not paying for vaccines. Vaccines are free. And with that, COVID on our minds. COVID has been on our mind for almost a year now. It's been a very dark year. And after a year of darkness, one has to look for rays of light. And we found a ray of light in our community in an 18-year-old Thousand Oaks High School graduate. And it is my pleasure to introduce a new program called the Community Commitment Award, where I recognize one person in the community each month who is working hard behind the scenes and totally under the radar, serving our community. We just, these precious people are in our community everywhere. We just have to look for them, and when we find them, we need to give them recognition for the work that they are doing as unsung heroes. I could not be prouder to introduce our first recipient, an 18-year-old, as I mentioned. His name is Wilbert Uck. He's a graduate of Acacia Elementary, Redwood Middle School, and Thousand Oaks High School, and now attends Moore Park College on a full scholarship. From the day this lancer was born, he has been living at the once gang-infested crime-ridden housing complex at 850 Warwick here in Thousand Oaks. My boys and I have volunteered with Wilbert in Safe Passage on many occasions, and have seen firsthand how this young man has done more than most kids his age for our community. You see, Wilbert hasn't really had an easy upbringing. He lost his father at a young age, and he had to step in to help his mother and his three siblings. When the Conejo Recreation and Park District created the Homework Club at 850 Warwick to catch children before they fall through the cracks, Wilbert was one of those kids. But he made such an impression on CRPD supervisor Lori Olbrich, who has since retired, that she hired him at age 15 to take care of other children at the Conejo Community Center. And guess what Wilbert did with his very first paycheck? Wilbert bought groceries for his family. Wilbert's passion to help others did not stop there. And in a moment, you will see a photo of him dressed up as Santa Claus, which he has been doing for hundreds of underserved children at the Safe Passage Christmas party every year. He works with the kids as a mentor and helps to identify those who need extra help by contacting the school district and Safe Passage so that the adults there can intervene. Wilbert helps to distribute food to struggling families and young children, and when food runs out, he grabs his own meal and he hands it over to a child in need, even though this means Wilbert himself will go without a meal. And this happens over and over. This past year, when the City of Thousand Oaks announced a rental assistance program, none other than Wilbert jumped in to help the city set up a series of pop-up centers to assist Spanish-speaking families to complete their applications. He was also the primary translator. And last April, and through the summer, Wilbert helped the school district identify many children who needed laptops like these and Wi-Fi so they could actually participate in distance learning. So now, it's time to meet Wilbert. And because of the pandemic, we presented the award outside his home at 850 Warwick.
Hi, I'm Claudia Bildelapenian. I'm the mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, and I am so excited because today we are presenting the inaugural Community Commitment Award. The City of Thousand Oaks has so many volunteers, many of whom really are never recognized. And today, I am presenting one of those unsung heroes to you. He is 18 years old, graduated from Thousand Oaks High School, is attending Moore Park College. It is my pleasure to present, after one year of darkness, to a ray of light, and that ray of light is Wilbert Uck. Congratulations.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity, first of all. Really appreciate it.
Wilbert was chosen because of his volunteer work. He's become the right-hand person to our former police chief, Tim Hagel. Tim Hagel founded Safe Passage Youth Foundation. And with that, I would like to bring over Tim Hagel to hear from him directly why Wilbert Uck is such a wonderful person.
Wilbert is an amazing young man. When I think about Wilbert, I think about a servant heart. This is, this is a person in the Conejo community that puts everyone else above himself. The hierarchy is simple. He meets the needs of his family, and he meets the needs of his community. And Wilbert, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
And now I would like to introduce the Vice President of Community Affairs, Amy Commons of Los Robles Hospital. She has some really wonderful things to say about Wilbert.
Congratulations, Wilbert. We are so, so proud of you. We are humbled and honored to have him in our community. He really embodies everything that is good. His lens is always focused outward on what he can do for his family, for his community, and certainly the City of Thousand Oaks. So truly, we are just so proud of you, and as we like to say, you are the change that we want to see in the world. So thank you for all that you're doing for our community. You're going to be a fierce, formidable leader, and we're looking forward to everything that you have to offer us. Congratulations, Wilbert.
To see why. To see why Wilbert is being praised and honored today, let's take a closer look at some of the work that Wilbert has done.
Volunteering for Safe Passage makes me happy. Being there for these kids makes me happy. This program has given me the chance to connect with these kids. I know what they're going through on a daily. Have you ever built a Lego before?
No.
No? Really? And I know how, how it feels, and some of their home lines aren't pretty. And I know for a fact my home life wasn't pretty. Growing up, I never really had a father. He had his own demons that he was battling. Sadly, he passed away. And from then on, I just decided to help people. If I could help people not become like that, let their story end like that, then I did a good job. What I want them to get out of is, like, at this age, is that it's okay to enjoy being a kid. And when they're older, is to hopefully, they take some of the lessons I've taught them and use them out into the world in their own way. To anyone in the City of Thousand Oaks who is wanting to volunteer, just do it. You will be surprised how much people you impact by you just doing one simple thing. Thank you, Thousand Oaks.
Wilbert, you are setting the example for so many other young people in our community. Volunteerism is something that comes from the heart. True dedication, dedication to a community really comes with concern for one another and love for one another, and you have embodied that, and I know you will continue to embody that. So thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving us the opportunity to honor you, the first recipient of the Community Commitment Award in the City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. I'm glad that I'm setting the example, and hopefully from this, more people will be willing to volunteer for the city.
We have Wilbert with us this evening, and he is joining us. Yes, people are applauding. There we go. We have Wilbert joining us this evening. He is seeing this presentation for the first time. Wilbert, are you there? If you would like to say... I think he is in the waiting room.
Hello.
Hi there. Hi there. Hi, Wilbert.
Nice to meet you. Hi, guys. Hi, everyone.
It was, it was so great to see you, and now the entire community knows why you are so special. You're in the spotlight. We are applauding for you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Very grateful for getting the award, and hopefully more things to come. And hopefully, the next time I'm in this meeting is when I get the key to the city.
There you go. Yeah, you will be sitting in this chair not too long because former police chief Tim Hagel knows I call you the mayor of Warwick.
I go by many names.
So again, congratulations. You're setting the example, and as you saw, Wilbert has given thousands of hours to the most underserved children in the Conejo Valley, and he's able to do that with a smile while carrying a full load, not only at T.O. High School, but now at Moore Park College. And remember that Wilbert has been doing this without ever receiving public acknowledgement until today. He has been a completely unsung hero no one has ever heard of, but he makes a world of difference. So Wilbert is that ray of light that we need after a time of darkness. So if you know someone who has worked quietly behind the scenes and completely under the radar, someone who has never stepped into the spotlight like Wilbert, please nominate him or her by going to www.toaks.org/CCA. Not sure if we have the chyron for that. That link is www.toaks.org/CCA. I wanted, I need to give you a virtual hug. Couldn't hug you in person, but when we're out of this, this whole pandemic, we will catch up and would do that. Again, congratulations. So that was our uplifting moment of the evening before we go into the weeds here of city council policy. The first one is going to be public comments.
Now is the time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. One individual has requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you very much. And I don't seem to have any public speakers. Do we have public speakers? We have one? Okay. All right, here we go. That person is LaShawn Aaron. We cannot hear LaShawn.
Can you guys hear me now? I'm muted.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to make a public comment. My name's LaShawn Aaron, and unfortunately, you guys may have seen the video on the news and in, you know, all over the place in regards to my son and his friends at the Target-Westlake incident where they were racially profiled in the store. And they were manhandled and treated pretty badly by Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. So I'm not going to rehash the incident, but I'm here to speak as a parent and also as an activist. My organization, 805 Resistance, has addressed the city council several times, and we've also submitted a resolution to address racism in our community. And so I'm here as a parent, as a community member, as, as an activist, and someone that cares, to ask that you guys do consider passing that resolution and acknowledging that these things are taking place. Prior to that incident, there have been several things that have happened in the school setting. We are residents of Thousand Oaks, so we are part of CBUSD. I've been working with the school district and several board members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, to, you know, figure out ways that we can address racism, anti-blackness in the, that setting. But I'm here to ask that you guys would consider something that I feel is reasonable, something that I think is very relevant, as do other, not just people of color, but I've had tons of people who are not, that are, that are white, reach out to me and say that this is very necessary, and they're very outraged and hurt and in pain with us. They are also speaking out in, as far as having empathy and compassion and wanting to be supportive. So we're asking that you guys consider that. Should it need to be revisited? That's okay, but that is my request of you guys. I know we have a meeting set up with Mr. Freihoff. I believe it's for tomorrow. And, you know, these are things that weigh deeply on my heart as a parent who should never have to have my son subjected to so much humiliation and pain. And it wasn't just him, it was, you know, other children, and it wasn't just other, the other kids that were with him, it was the people in the store that were afraid, that were scared for them, the little kids behind, in the video that you can see behind what was going on with my son, those kids were afraid too. So it doesn't just impact us, people of color, it impacts everyone around us, and I think that we should all really care, we should all have a sense of humanity to really address these things in a very thoughtful and strategic way. It is not to point blame, it is not to make others feel guilty, but it is for us to really look at ourselves and really wrap around those of us that are of color, people of color in this community because we are here.
Ms. Aaron, thank you so very much for your presentation. Yes, I did see the video, and yes, it was appalling, and yes, it's still shocking in this day and age, as we know, systemic racism in this country. It's something that we all need to work on, and we, as a council, may be discussing this in our upcoming...
Mayor Bildelapena, I might, if you have a moment, I might just want to take a moment to remind the council and to remind the community. Obviously, as she mentioned, she's going to be meeting with Chief Freihoff tomorrow, and while the incident did happen in Los Angeles County, it's, it's nonetheless appalling and to see those actions. And so from that perspective, want to remind everyone in the community, as we've done throughout the national discourse on this, that we're actually in a perfect moment to have a broader conversation on these issues. We actually have an entire element of our general plan that's dedicated to environmental justice, and we've had some focus discussions this past summer on it, in that element, which will actually have policy elements tied to it. So it's the opportunity to really effectuate change. I encourage people to get involved in that, in the general plan as a whole, but in particular to that element. Toaks2045.org, Toaks2045.org, and you can sign up directly there for participation. So that's just one additional opportunity for real conversation and dialogue, so I wanted to make sure to point that out.
Thank you. If I, if I may, I want to thank you for stating that. I do want to just make sure that we understand that systemic racism is beyond just environmental racism, and this, the situation that took place was extremely harmful in terms of mental health. You know, we, we are dealing with these things almost on a daily basis, so I just want to make sure you guys understand the gravity of it, and that it's, it's, the systemic clearly means systems, you know, so it's, it's, there's many different dynamics to this. And I also want to just make sure that, as a city council, that we are making sure that you have people of color that are part of these different, you know, committees and things like that, so maybe just some more intentional outreach, because we, we should be at the table when things concerning us are being discussed.
Thank you. Mr. Powers did say what I actually wanted to state about an upcoming study session. So we, the gravity of, of this is not lost on me personally. I just wanted you to know, Ms. Aaron. Thank you for your comments. We, Ms. Aaron was our only public speaker this evening, and with that, I will go to the consent calendar. Are there any items which my colleagues would like to pull?
Pull 7E, Mayor.
Pardon me?
7E.
7E.
Mayor, I would like to pull 7F.
Seven, which one?
F, Frank.
S, S and Frank.
Move the balance of the consent calendar.
We have a motion. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
Mayor Bildelapena?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will go to item 7E. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. I always like to pull these items. I'm an inveterate cheerleader for connecting the city, and that's what we're going to do here in a very important way. We're going to build bike lanes and sidewalks along Willow Lane, which is a little street that runs parallel to the freeway and connects the western part of Westlake Village to the lakes and the Civic Arts Plaza. And it's going to be a huge improvement. Right now, there's, there's really nothing there for pedestrians or bicycles, bicyclists, and this is just one more way that we're connecting the city, trying to get people out of their cars and either walking or biking. Ultimately, somewhere down the line, we may see some housing at the Kmart site, and that would also connect those folks with our downtown. So it's a, it's a great thing we're doing, and I'm, I'm happy that we're continuing to connect the city.
And that sounded like a motion.
Oh, yes. Move 7E. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bildelapena?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We go to item 7F. Mr. Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I'm, I'm always, one of the most interesting things in our agenda every week is the, is the consent items. In those items, we are doing the nuts and bolts of the city, buying things, fixing things, making things happen. I just wanted to highlight the F this, this week. A few years ago, well, more than a few years ago, we, we converted from our old diesel buses to compressed natural gas buses, which were in itself a, a step toward a better use of energy and a cleaner form of energy. And I just wanted to highlight that in F, we are now 10 years early than we would be normally required to do so. We are now purchasing electric buses on a, on a piggytail with another, a couple of cities to get a better price. But we are now electrifying our bus fleet, moving away from natural gas, a decade before we'd be required to do so. So I just wanted to highlight that as another way that the city is, is being conscientious about our use of energy and the greenhouse gas issues that we are faced with. So with that, I would like to move 7F.
Mayor Protem Engler, 7F indeed is exciting, as we are the first city in the county with these buses, so...
Mayor Protem, may I make a comment, please?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. McNamie.
I just would like to also put out that, the following thought, that our project manager, Mr. Finley, pointed out that the reason why these have fallen into a price point that was comparable to traditional buses was because of a grant that the city received and took advantage of. So kudos to those who are heads up to recognize that the grant was available, but I want people listening in to realize that absent those grants, this would not have penciled out. So I applaud the ability to grab those grants, so that way we can be ahead of the curve, as Councilmember Engler pointed out, so we can get ahead of the curve and take advantage of it while we can, because at this point, it doesn't pencil out if it was going head-to-head, but the grant made it possible, and so I'm glad we were able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Engler, was that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Engler moves for approval of item 7F. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bildelapena?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0, and I have an ordinance title to read. That ordinance title for item 7H is Ordinance Amending Section 424 Oversized Vehicles Parking Prohibited of Chapter 3 of Title 4 of Thousand Oaks Municipal Code for Elimination of Exception for Oversized Vehicle Display Pack Placards, and that is your ordinance number 1683-N-S. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, would you be so kind to open our public hearing, item 8A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding microgrid development at Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. This is actually a very exciting presentation by our Sustainability Department and our sustainability manager, Dr. Helen Cox. It is the future of Thousand Oaks, solar energy and microgrids, and that comes in very handy right now after having gone through various PSPSs because of the storms. Good evening, Dr. Cox.
Good evening, ma'am. Let me just put this on. Good evening, ma'am, members of the council. I'm here this evening regarding an energy service agreement for the development of a microgrid at the Hill Canyon Waste Water Treatment Plant, and joining me tonight is Cliff Finley, the Director of Public Works. This project meets the council's priority to promote environmental sustainability and is a key strategy that was identified in the... is a key strategy that was identified in the city's sustainability plan for municipal operations. That was adopted by council in 2018. So we start off by describing a little bit about what is a microgrid. A microgrid is a, allows a group of electricity generating sources that normally operate connected to the traditional electric grid to be disconnected from the grid and function autonomously when necessary in so-called islanding mode. It provides a self-sufficient energy system or small electric grid, hence the name microgrid, for a discrete geographic area, in this case, for the treatment plant itself. So there'll be an 870 kilowatt lithium ion battery that's going to be added, excuse me, to the existing solar system, the existing cogen facility, and the existing diesel generators at the plant. And these will be connected together through a controller that will operate the microgrid. A microgrid has many benefits. As mentioned, it will allow the treatment plant to operate autonomously as its own electricity microgrid in the event of an SCE power outage. Currently, the renewable energy resources at the plant have to be disconnected from the grid when there is a power outage. So the solar energy that's generated during that time is lost, and the biogas that's normally used to power the cogen facility has to actually be flared. In the current setup, the diesel generators are then used exclusively to power the operations. But when the battery and the microgrid are in place, when an outage occurs, the controller will take over and disconnect the treatment plant from the grid and will take over the energy operations and utilize all the available onsite energy facilities, the solar and the cogen, as well as the backup generators as needed, and allow the treatment plant to operate on its own little grid. This minimizes the use of diesel, saves on fuel costs, greatly reduces air pollution as a result, both from the generators and from flaring. And in this mode, the treatment plant could operate off the grid indefinitely. Another major benefit of the microgrid will be the use of the battery to store and discharge energy in a way that minimizes electricity costs. In normal daily operations, the battery will be charged by the treatment's solar and cogen sources and discharge that power as needed to meet the operational demands of the facility. By using the battery to store electricity onsite, the timing and the amount of the electricity that's pulled from the grid can be managed in such a way as to minimize costs. And that's because costs, electricity costs include what's called demand charges, significant demand charges, actually. And these are based on short-term spikes in demand, but those spikes can be lowered and smoothed out in a practice that's called peak shading, and that's by use of the battery to do that. In addition, the battery can save on electricity costs through a practice known as load shifting, because commercial electricity rates depend not only on the quantity of electricity used, but also on the time of its use. The battery can be used to effectively shift the time of use to cheaper off-peak times. And using the battery in this way will save the city up to $100,000 a year in electricity costs. In May 2020, council approved the application from the city for incentive funding through what's called the Self-Generation Incentive Program, or S-GIP. And last month, SCE approved an incentive of about $2.7 million to the city, which is estimated to be the total project cost. And that will be paid out over five years based on satisfactory performance of the battery and the microgrid. The city will pay some financing fees and an annual service fee to the developer for monitoring and running the operations. With energy cost savings estimated to be up to $100,000 a year over the 10-year life expectancy of the battery, and with fees averaging at about $40,000 a year, the city is expected to save over $600,000 over the project's lifetime. The savings will depend on the generation performance of the onsite generating facilities, the solar and the cogen. This project's another demonstration of environmental leadership by the city, utilizing clean solar and biogas power that's produced onsite. In the event of a power outage, it'll be able to run the facility self-sufficiently and add to the city's resilience measures. It will also generate significant energy cost savings and doing this without the need for any capital investment on the part of the city. So thank you. That ends my presentation, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you so much. We just need to get out of the screen so I can see my colleagues. I wanted to see which council member would like, Councilmember McNamie?
Dr. Cox, just had a question regarding the life expectancy of the battery. I didn't catch that during your presentation. How long do these batteries last and then have to be replaced? What's the life expectancy?
So the, they're guaranteed at least 10 years. So the current agreement is a 10-year agreement, but it doesn't mean necessarily that the battery is of no value after that. If the battery is functioning well, then we can keep it and continue the agreement for as a year by year, for as many years as we would like after that. The battery lifetime does depend on the amount of cycles, the number of cycles that it goes through, and particularly deep cycles. So it's a little difficult to predict in advance, but at least 10 years.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Finley? You there?
Yes, sir.
There we go. So you're saying that working with the EDF and SCE and the SGIP at the HCTP for a BSS is a good idea, right? I couldn't resist.
It's an excellent idea.
I couldn't resist. All right, seriously. Moment of levity there. So this will not just kick in when we have a power shut-off. This thing's going to run all the time, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay. And we're already self-sustainable at Hill Canyon, aren't we, between biogas and solar? So this makes us even more sustainable? Are we going to be a net producer of power now?
So we can meet 100% of the needs there on occasions, but that's not a full-time situation. So there are times, you know, for example, at nighttime, we don't have any solar generation. There are times when we don't have as much biogas. The biogas depends somewhat on the organic mix that comes in. So it varies. We're not 100% off the grid electricity all the time. We can be on occasions.
Okay. Well, I mean, Southern Cal Ed's going to pay for it, and we're going to leave, we're going to save $600,000 a year. Sounds like a good investment to me. Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? None? Then I will go to our two public speakers. The first public speaker is Clint, and he's joining us via Zoom, followed by Jan Dietrich, also joining us via Zoom. Good evening. Is Clint with us? Well, if Clint is not here, then maybe we go to Jan Dietrich. I see Jan. Jan, you just need to unmute yourself. There we go.
Hello, Mayor and councilors. So the development at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant prompts me to tell you about a state policy. I mean, I'm very totally supportive and excited about your batteries and the expansion of your microgrid. But we have this issue statewide. There's a barrier to microgrid development. I did send a written comment to everyone. And I asked, does the city pay for transmission access charges for the energy from the solar and the cogen? And Dr. Cox is so helpful today to look at the bill, I guess, and get back. And apparently, it's not, it doesn't look like you are paying transmission access charge on the energy generated by that solar array and the cogen. But normally, all Edison bills include a 2 to 3 cent per kilowatt hour that's been placed there for the use of transmission lines from distant power plants. And as I understand all bills, how these charges that amount to 10% of the total power bill and 25% or more of all energy charges, as opposed to the other charges on our bills. Every ratepayer continues to be charged for incoming energy regardless of whether that energy has come from the transmission lines or is locally generated. And so I have been involved here for about three years in an effort to reform the transmission access charges. That will save ratepayers and Thousand Oaks ratepayers proportionately an estimated $60 billion over the next 20 years. And that's a lot of money leaving the city. It could be calculated. Furthermore, developers who want to build community microgrids, expanding that wonderful opportunity out in the city, can't compete because transmission access charges are a false cost. It's like paying for shipping and delivery for a product that you yourself just picked up in the neighborhood. Therefore, the legislature, we determined, has to act with a law directing the CPUC to lead in fixing this problem. So we're looking for a senator and/or an assembly member, we've talked to a number of them, to author a bill that would finally solve this problem. So I'm asking if you would consider endorsing our bill. I'm happy to share more with you about it. It would be a statement that you no longer want to pay for services that you don't use and that you want to level playing field for commercial scale generation, so that more community microgrids will finally roll out through Edison territory. Transmission access charges don't happen to customers of municipal-owned utilities. It only happens in the three investor-owned utility areas. So again, I can provide you with a copy of our bill. I can make a presentation, answer questions. You have my email address, and I really appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If Helen Cox has all of the information, certainly we can, individual council members can discuss that with her as well. Thank you so much for the information. We do have Clint back. Good evening, Clint.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Clint. The city has long demonstrated admirable leadership with its Hill Canyon Biogas Cogeneration Plant and solar generation which powers it. Adding battery storage to enable use of that energy during off-peak hours, thereby creating the city's first microgrid, is yet another step to be proud of, and I would like to thank you in advance for making this happen. The Cano Climate Coalition supports this move and appreciates your efforts. But we also need a plan for community microgrids throughout the Cano Valley to curb the purchase of polluting diesel generators and protect citizens in the event of an emergency. In my own experience living off the grid and completely without municipal power in Cabo Pomo, Mexico, we had small solar power microgrid systems that supported us when those in the surrounding areas, who were tied solely to municipal power, were left unprepared in emergencies. When Hurricane John struck the Baja Peninsula in 2006, the neighboring town of Latibera was left without power for days on end. They were unable to pump drinking water and gasoline. Vital communications and medical equipment were rendered useless, and nights were spent in the dark without refrigeration, leaving food inedible and making medicines unusable. Thanks to the microgrids in Cabo Pomo, we suffered none of those problems. I urge the city of Thousand Oaks to include non-polluting community microgrids throughout the Cano Valley to protect its citizens from power outages due to wildfires, high wind events, and other emergencies. Climate change will unfortunately ensure these events become more frequent as time goes on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does, do my colleagues have any additional comments or questions? Or let me ask staff first to answer some of the questions that were brought up. Ms. Cox?
So regarding the proposal that was brought forward by Ms. Dietrich, we will be talking to our legislative analyst about the legislative platform and look at how we might include supportive microgrids in that platform. I would say that our local senator, Henry Stern, has been very active in trying to pass microgrid legislation at the state level. He did author a bill back in 2018 directing the CPUC to make it easier for the commercialization of microgrids, to prepare for that, including setting, directing CPUC to set tariffs for microgrids and quite a lot of other measures. And the CPUC was required to take those actions by December last year. So it is moving along. I would say that the legislation is behind the technology, so it doesn't need to move faster, but there do need to be things in place to allow commercialization of microgrids to be really economic. But certainly, we're looking at every opportunity that there is that we can, where we can support this as a city, whether it's legislation or whether it's taking advantage of opportunities through existing programs, through incentives, both from the, from the community and for the city operations.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Councilmember McNamie?
I just want to reiterate what Ms. Dietrich shared, is that best analogy I've heard is how are you paying for a service that you didn't receive? And if that truly is the case, question the constitutionality of that fee and look for reimbursement back to the ratepayers here in the Cano Valley if that's truly the case. So I, in turn, will be perhaps talking a little bit more with Dr. Cox, and I look forward to further conversations with Ms. Dietrich on this. Like I say, why are we paying for a service that wasn't provided? Doesn't make sense. So that's a comment, and I applaud Dr. Cox on this project, because to me, this sounds like a win-win-win all the way around. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamie. Are there any questions of staff before I close the public hearing? None? Then I will close the public hearing and open it up for a discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Jones?
Did I say something?
No, but you turned your microphone on.
I did?
Yes, and I thought that maybe it was a sign you wanted to move the staff recommendation.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd be glad to move the recommendation. I didn't know my mic was off. Thank you.
No, it is on, actually. It's on. Your microphone is on. So we have a motion by Councilmember Jones to approve staff recommendation. One and two. Then I will call for a vote. Go ahead.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill Delapena?
Certainly.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. We will now go to, and thank you to staff and Helen Cox and our Public Works Department for being so innovative and creative. Appreciate that. Number 10, we need to move to item number 10. That is the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Operations and Programming update to be presented by the Chair of TO Arts, David Mead. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts Board Directors, it's my pleasure to present to you our report covering the TO Arts operations and programmings for the six months ending December 31, 2020. I'm going to go through some of the different topics, and our Executive Director, Jonathan Soret, will be presenting some slides on that. So with the first slide, under governance, we'll get there. Thank you. Like to report that our former Chair, Leanne Nelson, was just re-elected to the TO Arts Board with, for an additional three-year term expiring December 31, 2023. And we also, this last year, amended our bylaws to allow for there to be, for seven, for seven directors up to 11 directors. And the City Council voted to ratify that change to our bylaws in August. With that, we went ahead and elected two additional board members, Kathy Jeffers-Volk and Kyle Rohrbach, to the Board of Directors, and we are grateful for your ratification of those new directors this past November. And so both of those individuals will be for three-year terms. And then, as you can see, I was elected as the new chair effective January. And Allo was elected our treasurer, both of us to serve for three-year terms. In addition, we had, John Bradley was our past treasurer, and as I mentioned, Leanne Nelson was our chair, and we both recognize them for their long-term service in those roles. And we, they are both remaining on the board. In addition, Eloise Cohen was elected as a vice chair, and Janet Cher was elected secretary, both of whom will serve one-year replacement terms for the offices that they took over from me and one of the other board members. Additionally, one of the things we did and what we felt was important was a need to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion and work towards our guiding vision, which is where the arts thrive for all. So we formed a DEI task force to focus on increasing access awareness and participation in the arts. And so, over the next year and years coming ahead, we'll be, we'll be addressing that, and this next six months will be a very focused intention on that. We'll go to Slide 3. We've retained an independent external auditor who's in the process of finalizing our audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. And then, despite the pandemic, which obviously has impacted the arts immensely, not only in the Cano Valley but throughout the world, we have been able to adopt a $740,000 operating budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Even though, obviously, our theater remains inactive right now, we obviously don't have concessions going forward in the theater, and we've been limited to, we've only been limited to outdoor programming, which some of you may have attended, which are drive-in events presented as part of our TO Arts Roadshow. And so now, let's go to Slide 4. Obviously, despite the impact of the COVID-19 on, on the arts and the suspension events and everything, we have had tremendous support in the community for the arts, and we truly appreciate the businesses and individuals who've continued to support TO Arts programs and our mission. It's been a challenging time for fundraising for us, as it is, has been for many organizations in the Cano Valley, but we were grateful for those who've been able to contribute to us for this last half of the year.
This is the big check, paycheck.
Hello? So, for the last half of this year, we did receive 127,000 cash donations and also in-kind support valued at 60,000. And we also continue to have our Producers Club with individuals who donate 1,000 or more annually, as well as our Audience Circle members who give monthly donations between $10 and $75 a month on that. Let's go to the next slide. Thank you. One of the things we're very happy with, and that's a brand-new program and that's very exciting, is our new Access Arts Program, which has been developed in partnership with the Cano Valley Unified School District with a goal of supporting a weekly virtual arts education program, programming to all CVUSD elementary school students. This relationship provides us with an opportunity to engage with the resident companies and other local art partners to present arts to the students. These students were able to receive an instructional video about musical theater, which was produced by Five Star Theatricals. New West Symphony will also be providing a video about the symphony in March. So that's, that's been really great for us to engage in arts education. We'd also like to express our gratitude to the theater's technical support services supervisor, supervisor, Michael Tosco, who put together a virtual backstage tour of the Cavali Theater and Sheer Forum. So that's another virtual program that students, as well as anyone in the community, can access and see through the TO Arts website. As you, many of you know, we've brought many students in the past from all over Ventura County to the theaters to experience presentations live as part of our kids' and the arts program. In response to a survey by our Development Director, more than 30 schools in Ventura County confirmed their desire for additional arts exposure opportunities. And so, since we can't bring them to the theater, we're trying to bring the theater to them, obviously. So we're now working on trying to curate a season of virtual field trips that administrators, teachers, parents, and community members can watch with their kids at no cost. Many of these will include study guides and teacher resources as well. Also, Pacific Festival Ballet shared a recent production of their annual ballet, The Nutcracker, as the inaugural virtual field trip. And these field trips, as I said, are accessible through our website at www.toarts.org. So with, with obviously not being able to attend in-person programming at the Civic Center, the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, it was important for us to still have live theater, live events, and other events that members of the community could attend. So we, TO Arts created the, or presented the TO Arts Roadshow, and with that, we presented seven events, which included several movies and live concerts. Although we don't have an accounting of individual attending, attendees, because we don't know exactly how many people were jammed into each car, we know that there were more than 500 cars that attended these events. And this roadshow is made possible through generous funding from our sponsors and with partnership from the City of Thousand Oaks, the Cano Recreation Park District, and the Lakes of Thousand Oaks. And I personally attended a few, and it was just, it was great to have that experience. Next, our grant programs. Our operating budget includes $500,000 in funding to the theater funds and to help sustain the operations of the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. The Dr. Raymond Olson Performance Grants was established to provide local nonprofits with financial assistance to make usage of the theater facilities more accessible. Although we didn't allocate any performance grants for fiscal year 2020, 21, due to the theater's closing, qualifying nonprofits with unused funds remaining from the fiscal year 2019 to '20 received those funds to support their operations. In addition, as part of this, the remaining funds earmarked for the, earmarked for the resident companies were used to offset their use of the Cavali Theater and Sheer Forum for their video recording. New West Symphony has also been able to record segments for their global sounds, local culture, virtual series. Five Star Theatricals recorded their Thankful Stream, and Pacific Festival Ballet was able to use the theater to record their original ballet film, Holiday Angel. As part of these grant offerings, TO Arts is committed to assisting our grantees by covering 50% of their membership to the Center for Nonprofit Leadership at Cal Lutheran University, if they are not already members. Also, with this last year, we implemented the Full Brand Identity and Marketing Plan, and we transitioned to a brand-new look, logo, and website design. And as you can see on the slide, that our new logo is present there. To support this new branding, we have contracted with a professional media firm to help build brand awareness and increase awareness of TO Arts work and programs for the community. In addition, through the development implementation of the plan, TO Arts' vision and mission statements were revised to better reflect the desired reach of our programs. And last August, the City Council ratified the change. Our, so for, for our 2021, 2022 work plan, as we look to develop our work plan for the coming year, we will be conducting a strategic planning session later this spring to develop a multi-year strategic plan and annual action plan. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion will be more purposefully woven into our programs and operations as we seek to access, participation, and our reach in order to further our vision of being where the arts thrive for all. We will continue our planning with the Bank of America Performing Arts Center staff to focus on resuming live events safely and responsibly when we are permitted to do so. This will include logistics surrounding TO Arts Presents and Kids in the Arts programming, as well as our concession operations. Obviously, the, as I mentioned earlier, the pandemic has certainly affected the way in which we operate and remain engaged with our community. However, we, we have learned some new skills, as you have too with, obviously, Zoom and all these other methods we have to learn to handle this scenario. So thinking outside the box has obviously provided us with an opportunity to expand with new programs, to improve accessibility, and to enable TO Arts to reach a larger population in different ways. And obviously, we're going to look for ways to incorporate some of these new offerings into our delivery programs moving forward. So on behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff and the patrons whose lives have been enriched by exposure to arts, culture, and entertainment, thank you for your continued support of our efforts and activities. This concludes my report, and Executive Director Jonathan Soret, and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for this very, very comprehensive report in outlining the challenges that COVID has presented to the artist's community. The artist's community is being hit the hardest of all the industries. I'm not talking about actors necessarily in TV or film, but those on stage, because the curtain has not opened up, it hasn't risen yet, and so it's still down. And those artists are the ones that really have not been able to practice their skills and their talent for more than 10 months, and I cannot wait until they will be able to do so. And thank you so much for making it possible through these roadshows that at least some of them are able to showcase their skills. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Mayor Protem Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick question. You know, we're all expecting things to turn around here one of these days, and hopefully we can all get back in the theater. It's really an overhead question, I think, for either one. How long will it take us to spool back up and get acts into the theater once the, we get to go ahead to reopen for that type of venue?
I'm going to leave that to Jonathan to answer.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Councilmember Engler. You know, we, we've made a very concerted effort to try and keep things as close as we could in the pipeline, so we're not leaving, we're not extending ourselves too far out once we do get the ability to reopen. Our anticipation is that we will be able to reopen with smaller capacities first. So that's been our primary focus, to keep events that would have normally fit in the Sheer Forum Theater, where Mayor Villalapena is sitting tonight, and keeping those on the calendar, so if we do get the ability to do socially distant performances at a quarter of capacity, we can move those performances into the Fred Cavali Theater and distance our audience around. So we, we do keep some of those in the pipeline in front of us, and then our larger shows that we've been rescheduling since March of last year, we have rescheduled into the fall, actually, summer, late summer and fall of 2021, as well as adding new shows along the way as well. So I, I think the more concise answer to your question is, we're doing everything in our power to make sure that the time between which we get to open and we have some of our shows coming in is as short as we can make it.
Thank you for that.
I must applaud you on the diversity, equity, and inclusion proposal that you are exploring. I think that is a wonderful idea. Any other comments or questions? This is only a receive and file, so it does not require a formal vote, correct? I don't think it does, no. And so, we thank you very much for this update, and I'm counting the days until the curtain rises again in our theaters. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Good night.
And with that, we go to our department report, number 9A, and that is the Residential Capacity Allocation and Initiation of General Plan Amendment for a project on 500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We will hear an introduction from our City Manager, Drew Powers, first, followed by a presentation also by Carlos Contreras Sr., who is the planner, and then we have our Community Development Director, Calvin Parker, available for questions as well after the presentation. So go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Villalapena. Just wanted to briefly provide some context as a reminder to both the council and the community that this is the first prescreen after the City Council made some adjustments to streamline the prescreen process in December. This is the first of several prescreens that the council and the community will see over the next two and a half months. And the reason behind that, I wanted to remind everyone, is that we're coming up on the general plan land use element. And so these prescreens are being brought because these are applicants that have come forward looking to do projects in our community. And allowing us to bring those now at this juncture gives the City Council the opportunity to make a decision as to whether you would like to grant it, move it forward, and elicit some level of control over a development that can occur with a development agreement and through our process of prescreening. Once the general plan land use element is advanced and moves forward, it'll take on a different process, and it's not better, not worse, but affords the City Council a bit less flexibility and creativity. The unit counts that are being sought in each of these prescreens are a ceiling, so I want to remind everyone of that. As these come forward, you see, tonight is a 300-unit allocation that's being sought. The Kmart site, which was the last prescreen you had way back in May, had a ceiling of a unit count, and just as a matter of context, that project is moving forward through the process now. They are preparing for an application, having gone through the pre-app step, working with the city to refine their project, and they are reducing unit count. And so that ceiling often is chipped away at as you move forward through the process. So not always the case, but certainly common. So I just wanted to remind folks what's before you this evening, and that you'll see a series of these coming. And that's really to afford the City Council an opportunity to answer the question whether you want to have an opportunity to elicit some control over these prior to the general plan process. So with that, it's my pleasure to have Carlos step forward. I think, Carlos, this may be your first big presentation with the council, and welcome, and take it away.
Thank you very much. City Manager Powers, give me a brief second so I can make sure that the PowerPoint is available to share. Give me a brief second so I can make sure that the PowerPoint is available to share. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. The project before you tonight is a request to allocate residential capacity and initiate a general plan amendment to allocate 235 residential units for a mixed-use project located at 500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The request consists of the following. Initiate the general plan amendment for measure E allotment of 235 residential units. Allow concurrent processing of entitlement applications in conjunction with legislative actions. In this case, legislative actions include the allocation of the units. And also evaluate the mixed-use concept based on the new simplified pre-screen criteria adopted by the city council in December of last year. As you are aware, the pre-screen process essentially serves as a tool necessary to allocate the requested 235 measure E units that are before you tonight. Now, a little background on the RCA pre-screen process and where we are today. In September of 2017, the city council approved an economic development strategic plan. That plan is a long-term vision that focuses on recommendations designed to help the city maintain its financial health and achieve future economic growth over the next 10 years. It should be noted that this plan identifies the subject property as one of those six opportunity sites. In December of last year, the city council amended the pre-screen criteria to refocus the process back to its original intent. The new process calls for a review of the concepts such as appropriateness of land use and allocation of the units rather than specific design issues. This new approach will serve as the most effective way to provide conceptual level review at the initial stage and leave design details to be addressed through the pre-application and formal applications of middles. So what is the pre-screen process? Again, it's an evaluation of a proposed concept against adopted city criteria and a required step to allocate the measure E units. The current refined pre-screen process calls for a conceptual level review based on land use to determine whether the site should be allocated units. In this case, a mixed-use concept requesting 235 measure E units. Please note that tonight's action is not approving the project, just allowing the mixed-use concept to proceed with the review and evaluation process associated with the submittal of a formal application. Also, this action does not guarantee the project will be approved during the formal review. As a project will be further reviewed and considered by the planning commission and city council at a later date. The applicant has 12 months to submit the formal application. And it should be known that the project may be modified between now and the submittal of the formal application. Projects get further refined to meet city development standards, codes and policies. Here is the review process and is provided graphically to better to better illustrate where the project stands today. There are many steps in the planning and development process. Today, we are in the yellow category, which is the pre-screen. This is the very initial step of the process. If the requested 235 units are allocated, the next step is the pre-application stage, which includes the development agreement. And we iron out development standards and other project specifics. Then follows submittal of a formal development application. And thereafter, the environmental analysis for SEQA compliance. And then hearing review process. At the end of the process, the planning commission would review and evaluate the project, hold public hearings and make a recommendation on the proposal to the city council. The city council would then hold a public hearing and take final action on the proposal. Again, should the city council allocate the units, the council will get another opportunity to reevaluate the proposal for final consideration. So the initial step in the review process, which is referred to as the pre-screen. As previously mentioned, this is a required step for the allocation of the units. The process adopted by council this past December involves the evaluation of the design concept according to the predefined criteria. The criteria outlined here serves to determine whether the concept before you tonight warrants the allocation of the requested 235 measure E units. This process allows the council to comment on the concept and its components early in the evaluation process. The evaluation criteria detailed in the staff report is as follows. The project setting, that is the concept design based on the proposed location. The quality of the concept plan. Regional housing needs assessment, that is affordable units that are proposed to the project. The concept features provided for community benefit and a design concept as it relates to the SP 20, which is the downtown specific plan vision. As far as the key project components, the proposed concept is a village square design. Then includes a residential component as well as a commercial component for a mixed-use development. There are six proposed buildings, four of those are mixed-use and two of those are apartment buildings. 300 total units are proposed with this project. Of those 300, 235 are measure E units. And the project also proposes 26 affordable units. 26 of those affordable units are in the very low and low income category. Here's an aerial photograph of the subject site. The property is a vacant 6.12 acre lot located south of the alignment of Houghton Camp Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The subject site is located within a developed area of the city, north of the 101 freeway and just east of Moore Park Room. The site supports four protected oak trees that will be discussed later in the presentation. And they are identified here in the green circles. Here's a shot of the subject property. This is looking southeast from Thousand Oaks Boulevard. In the green arrow on the right, you have the Valley Oak Tree along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And on the left-hand side, you have the other Valley Oak Tree. And then on the left-hand side, you have the high voltage lines. Those high voltage lines are primarily located on the eastern portion of the subject site. Here's another photograph of the subject property to give you a better idea of the lay of the land. This is looking south directly from the alignment of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Houghton Camp Road. On the left-hand side, I do identify that again, that Valley Oak Tree that will be incorporated and preserved as into the project design. As this photograph demonstrates, there's a cyclist on the road there as there is a share row or a shared bike lane on Thousand Oaks Boulevard along the project frontage. Here's the proposed concept. As demonstrated here, access to the site is provided from Thousand Oaks Boulevard along the north side of the property and on Lumbar Street to the west. The access driveways lead to the interior access road shown here in red. The four mixed-use buildings indicated here in blue are located on the northern portion of the subject site, fronting Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And the two apartment buildings shown in purple are located at the rear of the property at the southernmost portion of the site. The basic concept includes onsite gathering and recreational spaces such as a public plaza at the northwest portion of the site. It includes green spaces throughout the property, walking paths and a rooftop terrace overlooking Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Here, we also indicate the the four protected trees. On the western portion of the property, you see the three Valley Oaks. And on the southeastern portion, I indicate the the coast life oak tree. The subject site is located within an area that offers a variety of job centers. There's nearby commercial, medical and professional uses. The site is within walking distance of convenience markets, restaurants, brew pubs, retail and entertainment. You have commercial as indicated here to the east and the west and the northwest of the subject property. You have residential, a variety of residential uses to the northeast of the subject property. And there are various bus stops within half a mile of the subject site. As indicated here in the blue circles, you have various bus stops along Hillcrest Drive, Thousand Oaks Boulevard that provide connectivity to Moore Park Road and Hillcrest and other major arterials of the city. And in the orange circle, we indicate the actual bus stop that is immediately adjacent to the subject site to the north along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The subject site is also next to, and as previously mentioned, a share row, a shared bike lane for cyclists. And the subject property is within 600 feet of the 299 mixed-use development project. The SP 20 encourages projects that create a quality, well-connected pedestrian-friendly environment along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. As proposed, the concept includes a public plaza at the northwest portion of the site indicated here in the pink circle. The plaza serves as an entry to the subject site and creates a transition from the public and semi-public realm along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The concept includes a pocket park at the southwest portion of the site as indicated here in the yellow circle, which then leads to the walking paths along the perimeter of the subject property and then lead over to Thousand Oaks Boulevard on the northeast portion of the site. The concept also includes a rooftop terrace above the mixed-use building at the northeastern portion of the subject property as indicated here in the red rectangle. Other design components include outdoor seating and outdoor dining, incorporating oak trees into the open space for public use and enjoyment, potential live-work units and undergrounding of 66 KV utilities. Staff would like to make a clarification pertaining to undergrounding the utilities as referenced in the staff report. The concept includes undergrounding of off-site utilities as well, north of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and along Houghton Camp Road, which would serve as a community benefit. As far as the regional housing needs, the city has an unmet need of 64 very low income and 56 very, sorry, 64 very low income and 56 low-income units. To illustrate Ventura County's income limits, the table here demonstrates the two-person annual household household income that is within the very low income category, which is 45,200 and the low income category at 72,300. The proposed concept provides 26 affordable units at the very low and low income category. Staff would like to clarify that in the staff report provided to the council, it is indicated that the project proposes a total of 11% affordable units, which would be 21 affordable. As previously mentioned, the project proposes 26 affordable units, which is 14%. As such, the additional six affordable units that are being provided by the project will serve as a community benefit. In terms of the oak trees and the impacts from this proposed concept, there are three protective valley oak trees and one coast life oak tree located on the subject property, property as previously mentioned. The product, the proposed project is designed to preserve the oaks. Existing trees are incorporated into into the design and based on this concept will not be affected by the proposed layout. Based on this concept, no removals are proposed at the moment. However, a tree report and tree protection plan will be required if any construction activity is proposed in the future. The photograph here on the left-hand side is of the existing Valley Oak that's on the northwestern portion of the site that would be incorporated into the public plaza. As far as the next steps, if the city council approves the request tonight, the applicant will then be required to revise the project plans based on the comments provided and then submit a pre-application. After that, the applicant will then need to submit a formal application on or before January 26 of 2022. Formal applications include, but are not limited to, general plan amendment, special use permit, lot merger and protected tree permit. Staff would like to note that through the formal review process, other city departments and agencies will be required to review the project and provide recommendations, conditions and an approval. The formal application would then require review and approval by both the planning commission and the city council. Therefore, staff recommended the city council provide direction to either adopt a resolution to initiate a general plan amendment to allocate the 235 measure E units and allow concurrent processing or deny the application for the allocation of the 235 units. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Contreras. I appreciate that. All right. We do have public speakers, but first there are council members who would like to ask a few questions. Councilmember Adam, followed by Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Mayor. Great job, Mr. Contreras. Very nice presentation. Clear and concise. Appreciate it. Just a couple of real quick questions. I'm encouraged to see the number of units, affordable units, 26 total. And as I understand, they'll be for very low and low income people. And if I recall, that we're deficient in that particular category, are we not? I mean, our arena, our regional housing needs assessment encourages to have affordable housing, but most of the time I hear it's in the moderate income side. So we're, this is a good addition to where we are short, is it not?
Councilmember Adams, yes, that is that is correct. As previously mentioned, the city has an unmet need again in the 64 very low income category. And this project would in effect provide the 26 affordable units and really help out with that affordability.
Good, good. And as far as burying those lines, that's a pretty expensive proposition, isn't it?
That is, and I can let the applicant and public works representatives speak to the total cost of the undergrounding of those utilities, not only onsite but also offsite.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure it's well into the millions. And that will provide certainly an aesthetic benefit. Well, it will also provide a safety benefit as well, I'm assuming.
Mr. Contreras? Did we lose him?
Oh, sorry. No, you did not lose me. I don't have an answer to that. If I can please ask that I defer that response to our public works, Public Works Department team so that we can get a better response for you regarding.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Finley might want to comment on that.
Yes, I've got that. Absolutely. Anytime we can underground electrical lines, that is the safest place for them to be. Out of out of sight, underground. It's what we we did on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This is 66 KV system. It's high voltage. Best place for that is underground. And yes, it is an extremely expensive proposition.
I can imagine. Well into the millions. And of course, we've been asked by residents many, many times to bury as many lines as possible with the fire danger we have here in the city. So I think this is a good benefit. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McNamie, followed by Mr. Engler.
Mr. Contreras, excellent presentation. Enjoyed seeing it. There's a lot of thought that went into this plan. The park there for aesthetics for the people to use as well as the layout of the property. Very nicely done. I have three questions for you that I'd like to have clarified, and I don't know if these were addressed in the presentation. I may have missed it. But what is the height of the buildings that are going to be there? Mix use, residential, residential above, retail, one, two, three stories? Can you give me some more details on that?
Staff currently doesn't have any specific details regarding the actual design components regarding height setbacks and others, development standard specifics. That would be reviewed, evaluated and vetted through the formal review process at a later date when the applicant can can design a concept around the city's various, various code standards and policies and also the Thousand Oaks downtown specific plan.
Okay. So right now we have no clues to how tall it's going to be or how many stories. But for 235 units plus 26 is what we're looking at to fit in that footprint. Let me move to question two. I only counted on that layout right there, 42 parking spaces. Is there any other parking spaces going to be underground for vehicles? Or was that just a schematic and not to scale as far as how many cars can actually fit on that property?
Again, this is a very basic concept layout, just looking at the at the land use concept as it fits on the subject site. At this point now, we just re-identified six buildings that are proposed on the property. I'll let the applicant provide more specifics regarding any kind of parking design. But at this point, what we have are the proposed concepts of the number of buildings and the mixed-use component and the layout on the subject property as it pertains to the usable open space and the other amenities that are provided on the project.
Okay.
If I may add to that answer, the project, if it gets the green light tonight to move forward, staff will be working with the applicant team to ensure that a project comes forward that meets the specific standards as it relates to housing and commercial in the specific plan. Although we don't have the specific location of where that parking will be, the applicant, and he can, they can clarify this when they get a chance to speak, have indicated that they will provide some parking structures to make up the rest of the parking needs. The parking you see on the site plan right now this evening is just to give you a basic concept or idea of where parking would be available in that village concept. If people were to drive through the site, they need to stop at some of the commercial businesses very quick. But appropriate parking will be provided onsite if the project gets the green light to move forward.
Thank you. Last one I have is, I noticed that, let's, let me draw you this. In fact, if you want to go to slide one as I say this, it may help, is that we have, we have westbound traffic on Thousand Oaks Boulevard passing the street. They're going to make a left-hand turn going into Lombard. And the, what I, what I'm looking at here, if we can go back to slide one, I'll wait. There we go. So we have Hodencamp. If a car on Thousand Oaks Boulevard approaching Hodencamp is going westbound on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and they want to make a left into Lombard, there's a opposing traffic has a left-turn lane that is going to make a left onto Hodencamp from eastbound Thousand Oaks, if you follow that logic. How, what is the distance from that turn lane to where you would make the turn into Lombard? How many feet is that? How many cars can fit there to make a left turn off of eastbound Thousand Oaks into Lombard?
We're going to turn to public work staff to jump in and sort of provide some of the traffic flow information as it, as it will relate to site ingress and egress.
Sure. Good evening. This is Nader, the Nader Haddari City Engineer. That would be closely studied as we would get into the, as project be green-lighted tonight. That would be closely studied during the development review process, and we do have some minimum standards. The project is anticipated to add a full access into the project site at Hodencamp, but we would be looking at that. The traffic in the Lombard isn't excessive, but we obviously need to accommodate a few car lengths. And so we've been getting familiar with that process. You know, we put a few of these pedestrian crossings in over the past year, and we've had similar areas where we have to make sure that we have, can afford at least a couple of car lengths to be able to turn left into the, into developments and out of development. That would be something that would be important.
The reason for my, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, councilmember Mac, I just wanted to add to that, having been at the table with this particular applicant through some early-stage iterations. This one's a little different in that quite a bit of work went into improving circulation for the concept. And in this case, the applicant was amenable after a lot of discussions to opening up that connectivity to Lombard and alignment with the intersection at Hodencamp. And in that case, it allowed for an ingress knee grass that preserved the oak tree and from public works perspective, provided a better circulation and flow to the project that, that didn't exist in some of the earlier iterations. Now granted, we're still very, very early stream here, and as Nader mentioned, the environmental on this will make some detailed assertions as to, to how all of the site distance and stacking issues would have to be addressed.
I, I thank you for that explanation. Reason for my concern is that if you look at maintaining that eastbound Thousand Oaks turn lane going left onto Hodencamp, if that's still maintained, I'm only counting maybe 30 feet or so, maybe 60 feet. So that would hold maybe three cars that would be able to turn into Lombard. And if we're dealing with some 500 cars that maybe needed to fit into that development, we're going to have cars backing up onto Thousand Oaks Boulevard, blocking Hodencamp and/or more traffic issues going on there, trying to make a left-hand turn for the eastbound Thousand Oaks traffic. That, that seems pretty obvious to me at this point. Needs to be a point of concern because the traffic flow may not permit, again, 500 cars coming in at any point of the day. You're going to have more than three or four at a time, and they'll start backing up at that location. That's, that's why I'm raising that point. So you've addressed the questions. It's something you think will come out in the wash as we go through the process. I appreciate that. And nothing's perfect on the first run, but it'll work out as you say it moves forward. So thank you. Madam Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. The, currently, we try to limit our density to 30 units per acre. And this is a, basically a six-acre parcel. Can you explain the, the mathematics involved in making this compliant with our current rules? I think that might go to Mr. Parker or Mr. Contreras.
So I'll, I'll jump in and start the response on that particular question. So the site itself, the density is based on the 30 units per acre, based on the project size itself. The SP 20 specific plan allows unlimited density above commercial and mixed-use projects if it meets certain criteria with it that's laid out in the specific plan in terms of the development standards. In this instance, there's the density bonus because of the affordable housing that's provided with the project. That's not counted in the density calculation based on state law, typically SB 1818. When you look at the density of the limit above the commercial and the site-based density itself, it averages out to roughly a little over 38 units per acre, which is in line with other projects that are similar on the Boulevard.
Thank you. And then, has the developer, developers aware of our SP 20 requirements on, on height and things like that? Is that correct? Have they been briefed?
They have been. As Mr. Powers mentioned previously, we've been working with them for a number of years on this particular project, and they're well aware of the requirements of the specific plan. So if the project is green-lighted by council this evening, we'll continue to work with them on a project design that'll work its way through the normal development process.
And just final question, the traffic flow there, as my colleague mentioned, may be a little bit difficult, and I'm sure will come out in the wash. Can, can people from Lombard Street, rather than go out to Thousand Oaks Boulevard and try to make a left at an uncontrolled intersection, use the passageway through the complex to go to the controlled intersection at Hodencamp for a safe return?
Let me get this one, Calvin.
Yeah.
Yes, and in fact, absolutely. That, that is a controlled intersection there at Hodencamp. So we anticipate, and, and back to the previous question, we anticipate people entering that that are heading west will likely use that signal at Hodencamp to enter to the development. And likewise, they could also exit that development or the commercial area at that signal as well, particularly if they're turning left. If they're turning right, they may decide to come out to Lombard and make that right turn, or actually go further down before they make the left out onto Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Thank you. I think as we go through our, our traffic studies and everything, that, that will become more clear to us. But I just wanted to clarify that the public, general public can use that access as well if they need to.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Any other questions? Okay, I do have several questions this evening. We were just talking about the density of this project. It, if it were 30 units per acre, that would mean 163 units, or perhaps 164 units. But we're looking at 300 units, which is a density of 50% or 55%. And, Mr. Parker, when you said it's about 38, the 71 units are not taken into consideration, nor are the 35% density bonus units included. Is that how you arrive at the 38%, I mean, at the 38 units per acre?
That is correct. The base density of the site is based on the entire project size, which is actually 6.12 acres. The smaller number that you mentioned, 164, that's a base calculation that staff used to determine the unlimited units that would fit above the commercial portion of the project. So you are correct in stating that the density bonus units do not feed into that calculation. When you take the base density of the residential units and the units, base density of the site and the residential units above the commercial, it's 235 units, which at 6.12 acres, factors at roughly 38 minutes per acre. So the density bonus units are not used in that calculation.
Okay, so you're using the, the larger acreage because the staff report refers to 4, 5.46 acres, not more than six acres?
That is correct, and that helps us identify the units that would be above the commercial if they built it to full capacity.
We don't know where the parking would be, you say? That would still have to be figured out?
Some of the parking would be underground, but in preliminary talks with the applicant, they do intend to provide some parking structures to meet the parking for the site. Ideally, it would meet the full requirements of the specific plan, and the applicant can elaborate on that when they have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. I will then, if there are no more questions, I will then call the applicant. The applicant has 15 minutes. And I believe we will have attorney Tom Cohen speak for the applicant for 15 minutes. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Tom Cohen. I'm here representing Mill Creek, the applicant. And with me tonight is Clayton Williams, who is a director with Mill Creek. And Clayton is available to respond to questions. Should you have any? I want to first thank staff for your report this evening and the encouragement that we consider all the possibilities that this property presents. Just as a, for your information, our client, Mill Creek, is one of America's premier housing builders, appropriately specializing in millennial-type rental housing, ideal for what we're talking about here. In its desire to foster the highest goals and satisfy the demanding quality requirements of the unanimous City Council 2011-approved Boulevard-specific plan, Mill Creek has chosen to invest in our city and to work diligently with you and your staff over the next many, many months to come up with a mutually beneficial enhancement of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And as you heard, we are requesting your approval to allocate 235 units of Measure E residential capacity through initiation of this general plan amendment and allow the project to go to the drawing board, where Mill Creek's design team will work closely with city staff on the project design and site planning and study the project's effect on the environment. We recognize that there's a lot of work to be done, including widespread community engagement. Recognizing that the council recently voted to change the prescreen process and that many of those watching tonight may not be familiar with the changes, allow me to highlight a couple of major points. First, projects are evaluated according to proposed land use. So we're, we're asking the council to consider a mixed-use project, including apartments and commercial uses. Second, we're asked to provide a conceptual site plan. You've seen that. It's extraordinarily conceptual, and it's been made a part of the report. A third, if we're granted approval tonight, we're going to be required to submit building elevations, floor plans, artist renderings, grading plans, landscape concepts, and a whole host of environmental studies are going to be required. To quote from the Community Development Department's December 15, 2020 staff report, specifically the section on benefits of the new process, in quotes, "It," meaning the old prescreen process, "is often misperceived as final approval of a project by city council rather than an initial assessment of whether the concept should proceed through the normal review process." End quote. In addition, I quote, "The revised process, since approved by the council, would refocus the prescreen review on concepts such as appropriateness of land use and allocation of residential capacity rather than design issues." And we strongly believe that our project concept meets the new criteria in all, all respects, and we're going to now outline the reasons why. And perhaps I'm stating the obvious, but this project is in a prominent location on the west end of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and Mill Creek is well-suited to the task of bringing the city a high-quality project with a wide range of amenities for the future residents, as well as a variety of focused retail that will serve both the residents and the businesses in the area. The Thousand Oaks Boulevard-specific plan calls for housing on this property, and this property uniquely represents the best opportunity on the Boulevard as an anchor on the west end to cite quality workforce housing close to jobs, services, and retail due to its six-plus-acre size within walking distance of the well-regarded Tarantula Hill Brewing Company, the Janz Marketplace, the Oak Mall, and many businesses along Lombard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and Moor Park Road. As you all know, the city, through the general plan update process, is looking for housing sites to meet the state's housing requirements. And this site, in our estimation, neatly fulfills a portion of the arena requirements. And we know that this site presents a number of challenges that Mill Creek is prepared and committed to tackling. First, protecting the heritage oak trees by incorporating the trees as features of the project. Second, the high-tension power lines that bisect the property will be placed underground at an estimated cost of five and a half to eight million dollars. It also includes taking down two poles on Hodencamp. Typically, development does not assume and is not required to bear this cost for bearing 66 KV power lines. The city at the onset asked, and Mill Creek agreed, to do this work at its cost, a significant public benefit to the community. In addition to undergrounding these lines, as I mentioned, two poles on Hodencamp to the north of the property will, will be removed. Another community benefit, allowing us to check the box, yes, under the community benefits criteria or offsite public infrastructure beyond what is required by the project is being done. These two site challenges result in the loss of more than 1.2 acres of the 6.12 acres of land area for development. In addition, the project is estimated to provide public open space and material access of what the specific plan minimum requirements are. So the project is, is, is doing significant things to provide public benefit. And then lastly, as you've heard, the project is also designating, designating almost 15% of the units affordable to income-qualifying residents. And as staff has stated earlier, the number of affordable units proposed exceeds by almost 40% what the density bonus law requires. The concept site plan you see has been the result of several, several iterations. And it's a village concept with public plaza areas providing an entry point into the site with pedestrian pathways connecting throughout the property with Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lombard Street. You can see large public plazas and areas for community engagement that will work in concert with the retail, restaurants, coffee, wine bar, and other potential uses within the village concept, hopefully creating a stonehouse vibe. We cannot overstate that this project will have both a catalytic impact on the area while also addressing sustainability principles that will encourage walking instead of driving, thereby reducing vehicle miles traveled, community engagement by providing a gathering place that will encourage the community to support local business and providing our local businesses a place for their employees to live. We continue to hear from the businesses, including the life sciences and biotech community, expressing a desire for contemporary housing options for the next generation of their workers. Last, staff did a great job walking you through how the project meets or exceeds the council's prescreen criteria. We've touched on the major points, but we'd be, we would be happy to delve deeper into that if you desire. Thus, what we are, what we have before you tonight is a project concept in full compliance with your recently adopted prescreen process. We fully acknowledge that decision tonight to move the project forward carries no commitment of project approval and that a rigorous entitlement process lies ahead. of project approval and that a rigorous entitlement pri, process lies ahead. And Mill Creek is, will commit to an all-out public outreach and to work closely with your staff to ensure mutually prideful housing attuned to residents' needs and quality of life desires. You can be confident that Mill Creek has already fully vetted our local industries and businesses to determine their employee needs and desires. Mill Creek would not have selected nor invested in our city were it not convinced that it has the route, right housing for current demands. Such demand is already established by the long waiting list generated by recently completed rental projects. In closing, I just want to thank you all for your time and your willingness to consider our request. I, I wanted to mention, uh, in, in response to comment from Councilmember McNamee, that the parking, uh, while there will be surface parking, as I understand it, you know, we're studying underground parking for this project. Uh, you know, there's been talk about structures, but it's so early in this process to really know exactly how that's all going to play out, but there will be, uh, the plan is for parking underground. So, uh, with that, I am available to respond to any questions, and of course, Mr. Williams is also available, should you have any questions, uh, of the Mill Creek, uh, ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any questions for Mr. Cohen or the applicant team, Clayton Williams? I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Cohen. It seems so long ago that we, um, discussed your other, your other client, and, uh, of course, the other project is not as close to the freeway as this one is. And so, you know, we, we do know that apartments close to a freeway corridor are not all that desirable because of the air quality, which is scientifically proven, will harm people's health and children's health. Yet here we are identifying parcels along the 101 freeway for housing. I, my, my question is, um, this is the densest proposal coming before the city council in the history of the city of Thousand Oaks. And it is indeed, if you factor in all of the units proposed tonight, it is about 55% density, but technically, we're not supposed to be counting these extra units, these density bonus units. So my question is, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, which was actually voted on on a 4-1 vote, I was opposing vote because I wanted the language to say that the height should be a maximum 50 feet, but the language said average height of 50 feet. And we know that with an average height of 50 feet, all kinds of different things can be accomplished. I was insisting on the maximum height of 50 feet, but lost out on that, and therefore, the Boulevard-specific plan was approved on a 4-1 vote. My concern with height is very well-known. This specific plan says three stories or average 50-feet height. Do you think that your client can hold to the three stories and will not require a waiver that exceeds the height specified in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard-specific plan?
Thank you for your question, uh, Mayor. Uh, it is extraordinarily difficult at this point when we're dealing with concepts and block drawings, uh, to give you any kind of, sense of how this is going to ultimately be designed. It's, it's just too early to do that. Our goal is obviously to, uh, bring a project to you, the Planning Commission staff, and, and in our work with staff to bring a, uh, specific plan-compliant project. That is our, that is our focus, and that's, that's what we're working towards. And that is, uh, the best that I can tell you today. There, there were a number of other things that you, you stated in your, in your prelude to the question. I don't know if you want me to address any of that, but I, 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 and when you talk about, um, proximity to the freeway and those issues, those are all issues that are going to be, uh, carefully studied. Uh, the, uh, Mill, Mill Creek is obviously going to be very concerned about the, the health and safety of their future residents, and, uh, they're going to do everything and, uh, that they need to do to protect them and, and ensure public health and safety is, is addressed, so. Uh, but, and, and, and we're going to do, you know, that'll be addressed in an environmental document. We're, we're, uh, but it's, it's just so early to, to get into any particulars about anything as it relates to, 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 to height, number of units. As, as was mentioned at the beginning, um, by Mr. Powers, you know, this is, uh, the ceiling, 300 units. Uh, and we're, you know, we'll, we'll see how it plays out.
Yes, the, I, I do understand it's a ceiling. I would be so much more comfortable if, if that ceiling were lower, if it were at the 30% average, uh, 30, 30, not 30%, but 30 units per acre. Um, this, this excessive density does give me some, um, palpitations, I have to admit. Um, it, um, and then I wanted to find out regarding the oak trees. I am glad that the plan at the moment is to preserve all three trees. We have had a, a case of another mixed-use project where a couple of oak trees died during construction because they simply either were not really completely protected or not cared for as they should have been cared for. And I am just wondering what sort of guarantee can be made that those heritage oak trees, all of them, which you plan to preserve, will not be damaged during any construction if the council moves forward with this and if it's eventually approved?
I'm sorry, I was muted, Mayor. The, the city has very stringent requirements, uh, as it relates to, um, you know, construction around oak trees. Uh, we, we intend to make these oak trees, uh, features of this project. They're not just trees in the middle, in, in the way of a development project. They're actually, the goal here is to make them features that people will gather under and around and enjoy their, their, their splendor. And, uh, so, uh, it, it, it would be a sad day if, uh, something happened to those trees. That, that, that's not anything we want to see happen. So, uh, we're going to follow all the, uh, the oak tree preservation, uh, rules and regs that are in your codes. Uh, you've got quality arborists at your behest, and, and we will as well, and we're going to follow those regs to the T. And, uh, uh, so you can rest assured that we'll be, we'll be keeping an eye on that.
Okay, are there any questions? In the meantime, Council, uh, Mayor President Bob Engler has a question.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. Yeah, tho, those trees are, are, if you were to try to replace those trees, it would be highly expensive. I, I urge you to, um, to take real good care of them. Uh, as you know, Thousand Oaks treasures, it's trees, especially it's oak trees. So please, please do everything you can to highlight those trees and also, uh, protect them. Uh, I, I read in the staff report, uh, one thing I haven't heard tonight yet. Uh, i- is Mill Creek, um, gonna, going to give a easement of five feet for an, an expanded sidewalk along the front is there on Thousand Oaks Boulevard? Did I read that, or did I get that wrong?
Uh, Councilmember Engler, I don't recall, uh, specifically, but I do know there will be, uh, the, the plan is, under the specific plan, to provide a wider sidewalk on, uh, Thousand Oaks Boulevard for, uh, you know, making it a, a, a nicer, wider experience, uh, and, and that it will help with, uh, you know, connecting the community into the project. So, uh, that is my understanding that that is a standard and, and, uh, I, I, I don't know if the site plan has any of that kind of, I don't, I'm pretty sure it doesn't have that kind of detail, but uh, that's something we will certainly strive for. So I think it's, it's a value.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it on the site plan, Mr. Cohen. I, I, I thought I'd read it in the staff report that, uh, there was going to be some, um, uh, deeding of property to make that a nice, wide thoroughfare for people to walk and enjoy the, uh, the new facilities and everything there.
The requirement is 15 feet of public sideways sidewalk in the front, but staff would probably be better able to answer that question.
Uh, that, that is correct. Typically, it's 15 feet and SP 20. However, if the project gets the green light, we'll work on those, defining those details if the project moves forward.
Uh, we do have a question from Councilmember McNamee. Before we go to Councilmember McNamee, I just wanted to point out that, yes, we do have strict rules regarding oak trees. We do have fines that applicants need to pay if an oak tree is damaged. But, uh, I don't think that the price or the fine is actually enough to discourage any sort of accidental damage to oak, uh, precious oak trees. So that's something we need to revisit. Also, I wanted to make sure I don't have a printout of our supplemental packet. Uh, are there any ex parte memoranda from council members? None, okay. Then I, Mr. McNamee, go ahead.
Mr. Cohen, thank you for your excellent explanations, uh, thus. I appreciate your diligence in trying to provide the answers appropriately. Uh, to come back to the height issue that the mayor has brought up, we have a, a property that was built and, uh, has now come to completion there at Erbs Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And the height adjacent to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, as I walk by, it feels like the Great Wall. And it goes up quite high, blocking one's views of the vistas that we have that makes Thousand Oaks so unique. And even with a 15-foot setback, if you've got a three-story-high building, it creates a tunnel-type feel. I just want to share that with you as you move forward with any type of designs, that that does not occur for the buildings that, uh, are adjacent to or on front of, uh, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so that way we can have that openness, that feeling that we have instead of walking through a tunnel. Just wanted to share that comment with you.
Appreciate the comment, uh, Councilmember. We'll, we, we, we note it, and, uh, that will definitely be part of our, uh, the process of creating a design that works for, uh, for everybody here.
Okay, then we will go to our next public speaker, and we have several in addition to written comments. Our first speaker is joining us via, via video, and her name is Rosanna Guerra. Is she with us?
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor De La Peña and City Council members. Thank you so much for your time. My objection to the proposed plan on this site, is the number of units proposed. Another high-density apartment building that's too close to the freeway, which leads me to begin to wonder, what are the guidelines under which proposals are approved? An important question to ask is, who are we building for? Does it promote inclusivity of seniors, affordability for working families, and sufficient accommodations for the disabled? Only 14% is proposed, I think we should aim higher. Our demographics are changing. By the year 2030, when all baby boomers will be older than 65, older Americans will make up 21% of the US population, an increase of 15%. That's only nine years away. The California Department of Aging has created a master plan for aging, addressing this need by proposing tax credits and other strategies to answer this housing issue. I hope that with each plan that is proposed, the city council views it with these statistics in mind and how important it is to maintain a sense of inclusivity as part of this blueprint. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Roseanne Witt, joining by video. And after that, we have Kat Selm. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor. The January 14th Erbs fire marked the third time in as many years that family or friends had to evacuate as wildfire threatened our homes. As a 2018 Woolsey Fire survivor, I empathize with residents who again watched flames draw near as they hurriedly packed children, pets, and basic necessities into cars to flee. Howling Santa Ana winds made it difficult to sleep for several nights afterward. I imagined glowing embers riding treacherously on swirling gusts and took some comfort in knowing my home would not lose power like 20,000 others throughout our county had. My family has been spared that particular terror by installing solar panels and battery storage that reliably keep our lights on, but most cannot afford that protection. So I read 9A's staff report with concern because it mentions no features designed to reduce the greenhouse gas pollution driving the heat waves and drought, making Thousand Oaks so ignition-friendly. Why aren't all of our buildings and our community designed to ensure residents aren't forced to navigate emergency conditions in total darkness? While I was heartened to read that the applicant always strives to achieve leadership in energy and environmental design certification for their projects, the urgency of our climate crisis necessitates an actual commitment to LEED certification for all new development in Thousand Oaks. All electric buildings in particular are essential for building safety as well as for indoor air quality and health. They also lower construction and energy costs and greenhouse gas pollution. So imagine our improved quality of life benefits if the city mandated all new construction be LEED-certified and feature EV charging stations, energy-efficient windows and insulation, heat-reflective building materials, and abundant park, garden, vegetation, and tree cover for enhanced shade and evapotranspiration. Imagine, too, the safety and peace-of-mind advantages if all 300 of those apartments were equipped with all-electric heating and air conditioning, clothes dryers, water heaters, and induction cooktops powered by rooftop solar and battery storage. That's the kind of project with built-in resiliency that the Keneho Climate Coalition could support. I'm here tonight to remind you of your December 15 commitments to designing and constructing new buildings to exceed green building standards and to have our Sustainability Division review individual project plans on the front end of the approval process. All electric reach code standards are the minimum we can accept or you should approve for all new construction under development or going forward in Thousand Oaks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kat Selm, joining via video, followed by Adam Haverstock with the chamber, also via video. Good evening, Ms. Selm.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Kat Selm, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Keneho Climate Coalition. I first want to add to my comments how I was so excited to hear about the bike lanes and the electric buses on the consent calendar. So last city council meeting on January 12th, members agreed to attempt more ambitious greenhouse gas emission reduction targets by adopting strong emission reduction strategies in the upcoming Climate and Environmental Action Plan, as well as the general plan update. Some strategies like electrification, requiring electric-only in new buildings, requiring LEED certification, microgrid power generation, and the inclusion of EV charging stations will need to become the norm in new residential and commercial projects if the city is to meet these goals. For these reasons, I was encouraged when reading the staff report on Agenda Item 9A, the proposed project on 500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, but the applicant always strives to achieve LEED certification in their projects. I recommend that the city council tonight make a motion requiring that the applicant achieve LEED certification on this project specifically and that their new buildings be all-electric. Gas is primarily methane, an extremely potent greenhouse gas, and it's also unsafe and hazardous for our health. Additionally, electric buildings can provide savings on residential energy costs. All-electric hookups in new building projects is one major strategy that must be realized in the city if we are to meet our climate goals. This is the time for the city to show true commitment to bold greenhouse gas emission reduction targets and with this project, show leadership on sustainability. And with that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Haverstock, followed by- Our next speaker is Adam Haverstock, followed by Catherine Zhu, via video.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Kenejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to speak in support of allocating units to the proposed project at five hundred East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This project is part of the vision of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan that was developed by our community and approved by you all and your predecessors. This project will bring much-needed housing to Thousand Oaks. As of 2017, the state of California had a shortage of up to four million housing units, compared to fourteen million in the housing supply, according to the US Census Bureau. State housing law requires that the City of Thousand Oaks must build two thousand six hundred and sixteen housing units in the sixth RENA housing cycle, according to the draft RENA allocations proposed by the Southern California Association of Governments. This project will get Thousand Oaks closer to meeting that mandate, all while developing Thousand Oaks Boulevard into a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use downtown. This type of development is what young professionals are looking for. Places to live located near places to recreate. The beauty of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan is we can have our cake and eat it, too. Our young professionals will have workforce housing and a downtown within the specific plan area, and the single-family neighborhoods throughout the rest of Thousand Oaks are protected. We can build projects like this while also maintaining the character of our single-family neighborhoods. Please support tonight's action, which is only the first, very minor step to making the dream of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan a reality for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Catherine Zhu. I'm not quite sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, followed by Ruby Cerota Foster. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Catherine Zhu. I was born and raised in Thousand Oaks, and I'm a student at Westlake High School. Just last week, I experienced the consequences of climate change in our community yet again. As you know, thousands of residents lost power for hours. And for me personally, I was unable to complete my schoolwork, and I lost valuable time for class and education. There were only a couple students in my class that were able to attend school, and many of my teachers were unable to teach because they were out of power as well. This needs to change. I completely understand that we need to lower the risk for fires, but what we saw last week was not the long-term solution. We need to move toward more sustainable energy in our city and community, and instead of striving to achieve a standard for sustainable energy in environmental design, there needs to be a commitment. Striving is not enough. I need to know that I can count on my community leaders to believe that the climate crisis is urgent and to take action beyond the minimum standards. The environment and community mean so much to me and many of my peers. So I am counting on you to be responsible and to take initiative to begin to address this urgent climate crisis through sustainable energy and new developments. I hope that the Sustainability Division is able to review project plans in the beginning of the approval process and to make this a priority in our community. I urge the city to mandate the implementation of energy-efficient windows and insulation, heat-reflective building materials, electric vehicles charging stations, rooftop solar, and so many more sustainable resources in these housing projects. For the sake of the future and for youth, I urge the city to make a commitment to sustainable energy in all housing projects. I urge the city to make addressing climate change a priority by making it a goal to take ambitious action to tackle climate change in our community beyond minimum standards. Thank you.
Well, here we have a Westlake High School senior telling us.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, could you have the speaker's state, the city of residence, please?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
I think so far, they have, most of them, if not all of them, been from Thousand Oaks. Thank you. So yes, we had a high school senior telling us what the future looks like, and I appreciate that so very much, that our teenagers are actually becoming involved and are concerned about sustainable energy. Next, we have Ruby Cerota Foster and then Mary Ann Van Zyle, both joining us via video. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ruby Cerota Foster. I'm an eighteen-year-old student in my last year at Westlake High School, and I've also been a Thousand Oaks resident all of my life. Like my friend Catherine, I'm extremely passionate about the environment, and I'm planning to major in environmental science in college. More than anything, I hope to return back to my home in Thousand Oaks after college and beyond that, to find that our city has kept its word and vision of progressing into a more environmentally friendly and sustainable community. I'm sure all the youth of our city strongly desire this, too, and I speak on behalf of them. This can only be achieved if decisions are made here and now in favor of the environment, in favor of reducing greenhouse gas pollution, and inextricably in favor of the health of our people and wildlife of the city. I stand alongside all of you members that are advocating for LEED certification for all-new development in Thousand Oaks, all-electric buildings, solar panels, and overall sustainable development of the apartments and buildings. I urge you to stand along with the youth of our city and concerned citizens like me, who will continue to deal with the consequences of anthropogenic climate change, pollution, and unsustainable development unless it is addressed starting at this level with this housing project and in future ones. I look forward to the sustainable future of our city as you continue to protect it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ruby. You and Catherine, you are both living in Thousand Oaks, correct?
Yes, correct.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Mary Ann Van Zyle and Danielle Borja, following Mary Ann Van Zyle. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I reside in the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks. I am in favor of the City of Thousand Oaks allocating the requested number of units for this location. It is an excellent location for high-density housing. Many residents in this existing neighborhood don't rely on cars. It has plenty of walkable grocery shopping, Latino Market, a small market which serves the Latino community is three blocks away, Namaste Spiceland, which is also a market, is one block beyond that, and the new Aldi is located at the Jan's Mall. This location has a walkability score of seventy-one, meaning that most errands can be accomplished on foot. Here are some of the businesses within a twenty-minute walk of this location. CBS, the Jan's Mall, including all of its shops, restaurant, and movie theater. Tarantula Will Hill Brewing Company, Kaiser Permanente, Parma Pizzeria, Estables Meat Market, multiple banks, multiple credit unions. And that twenty-minute of walking reaches the edge of the Thursday Farmer's Market and the Oaks Mall parking lot with access to the best and widest variety of local purpose in town. For people who must commute to their jobs, this site is near both the one oh one and twenty-three freeways, reducing traffic through other parts of town. It is a twenty-minute walk to the Transit Center on Rancho Road, where you can catch a bus to other parts of Ventura County, the San Fernando Valley, and downtown Los Angeles. In addition, this site is an excellent site for more than just a set aside for affordable housing. People who qualify for affordable housing may require certain set of social services. Those services are also available within a ten-minute walk from this site. Perhaps a small office could be established in the retail space for a part-time services coordinator on the site. I know the funding model for a development with more than minimum of affordable units is usually more complex, but I encourage the city to find partners who might defray some of the development costs for this property to increase the number of affordable units beyond a nominal amount because of its uniquely suitable location. Tonight, I ask you to allocate the housing units to the site based on the conceptual drawing. I hope as this project moves forward through the approval process, you negotiate with the developer to do the following. Maximize the affordable and moderate-income apartments available. Apply use restrictions on a portion of the retail space to serve the daily or weekly needs of the residents and create a social services office. And make sure the development is more than ADA compliant and is truly welcoming to people with disabilities, including seniors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Danielle Borja, followed by Jackson Piper. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor De La Peña and members of the City Council. My name is Danielle Borja, Thousand Oaks resident and President/CEO of the Greater Kenejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, representing over nine hundred businesses in the communities of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, and Agora Hills. The Board of Directors for the Chamber would like to express our support for the proposed allocation of housing units to Mill Creek Residential for this mixed-use project that is aligned with the goals of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. A project of this nature will provide much-needed workforce housing for young professionals and young families, while allowing our major employers to recruit and retain the young talent we need to make our community thrive. The recent historic investment in our biotech sector will ultimately create thousands of jobs and further elevates the critical importance of additional housing options for these professionals, while also providing an element of affordable housing units for our community. In addition to the housing, projects like this will create hundreds of good-paying jobs during the construction phase and will ultimately place more local residents central on the Boulevard within walking distance of local restaurants and other businesses. On behalf of the Board of Directors and over nine hundred members, I urge you to support the project's preapproval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackson Piper, followed by Sean Maradian, via video. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the City Council and community members here for the presentation. My name is Jackson Piper. I'm a resident of unincorporated Newbury Park. I have lived most of my life in the Kenejo Valley over thirty years at this point and consider Thousand Oaks to be my home and a community that I really appreciate. I'm a founding member of Ventura County EMB, which is a pro-housing advocacy organization. I'm also involved with the Thousand Oaks Livability Group and the Kenejo Climate Coalition. I wholeheartedly echo the recommendations that they have all made. I want to state that you've already heard many excellent reasons to approve this allocation tonight. I may state some things that are uncomfortable, but I wish to state them out in the open so that you may hear them. Please keep them with an open mind. The National Bureau of Economic Research has released a working paper recently that states that housing precarity in the US has resulted in basically a forty-point-seven percent, that's four zero point seven, increase in deaths than would otherwise have occurred due to COVID, which translates to about one hundred and sixty-four thousand more deaths due to a lack of uniform tenant protections across the United States. And in California terms, in 2017, research cited by USC Price in their Rent Burden Housing Subsidy in California study from the American Community Survey stated that fifty-three percent of renters were rent-burdened, which means they were spending over thirty percent of their household income on rent and utilities each month. Obviously, that was 2017. Things were far more stable then, so the situation has been drastically worsened since then. Thousand Oaks needs more housing. It needs more housing affordable to the people that already live here and the people that want to live here. And I would really encourage the council to adopt or to approve this allocation. I also want to bring up a point that, under Assembly Bill twenty-three forty-five, which became law on January first this year, a project may receive a fifty-percent density bonus if it provides fifteen percent very-low-income housing, which is between thirty and fifty percent of the area median income. Currently, it's proposed as eleven, so another four percent increase means they can have, instead of twenty-six units, they can have either thirty-five or thirty-six. I'm not entirely sure on the math there. This also means that the project total would increase one hundred and seventeen units instead of the, I believe, eighty-two units that would be allowed under the current density bonus that's been used. This means you could achieve basically over half of your required or needed allocation of very-low-income units in the city in this one project. Obviously, this would be a benefit to the city, along with all the others that are required. I think projects like this are not necessarily a bad thing, even at this density or higher, if they provide the housing and if there's a leverage for the city in allowing more height and density to get concessions for the environmental benefits and additional affordability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Next, we have Sean Maradian, followed by Tim Joyce, via video. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable councilmembers. My name is Sean Maradian. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Thousand Oaks and, excuse me, president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, speaking in support of the project application this evening. Just want to provide a little bit of context and history that ten years ago, in 2011, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan was implemented. Projects like this were at the heart of its success and viability. Ever since then, during the city council's annual goals and priorities, the city doubles down and says this council, the development of the Boulevard and its implementation are its top ten goals and priorities. In 2016 and 2017, the city performed an extensive economic development study performed by COSMO, which was, and Mayor De La Peña was presiding at that time as mayor, adopted five zero, which identified six opportunity sites, which were critical to the future needs and sustainability of the City of Thousand Oaks. This site was identified and envisioned as one of those six sites for this very purpose and use. The application before you is not for an approval. It is merely a conceptual pre-screen, which meets all the requirements, goals, and objectives. It meets the council objectives, it meets the specific plan objectives, and it brings the city's own economic development strategic plan closer to realization. It shouldn't be lost on anyone that we're in the middle of a pandemic, a real local economic crisis, our small businesses are suffering. If this project is ultimately approved, it will provide over two hundred million dollars worth of local stimulus directly into our community. It will give another ten million dollars in fees to our city and parks. It will connect the western end of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is currently dissected by this vacant, underutilized piece of land. It will produce dozens of new residents to patronize all the businesses that are within one block, walking distance of this project that definitely could use that type of stimulus. The demand for this project far outweighs the current supply of housing we have. I personally toured seventeen-ten, and of the units available, they are one hundred percent pre-leased with three hundred applicants waiting for places to live. This project surpasses all community benefits by any perceived impacts. And I like to respectfully say that a vote against this project is a vote against the council's own goals and priorities, its own economic development strategic plan, its steadfast support for the revitalization of the Boulevard, and much-needed affordable housing. Land is scarce. We cannot afford to waste it. We wholeheartedly support the pre-screen before you this evening and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tim Joyce, followed by Tim McDougall. And please, again, if you could state your residence. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Tim Joyce. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I was born and raised in the Kenejo Valley, graduating Newbury Park High School and returning to establish my life after college. I'm a Realtor, serving the community for twenty years, and I have the honor and privilege of representing people in this beautiful community. I am the founding and current Chair of Emerging Leaders, which is the Kenejo Valley Chamber's Young Professionals Group, and I support the need for the units requested to support the workforce and housing for young professionals who are looking for a walkable development to live in while they are in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Tim McDougall, followed by Crystal Evans. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, most of all. It's a very challenging time that we live in, and thank you for putting yourselves out there to be a part of our community and hopefully do everything that you were elected to do. I'm here, a local real estate agent. It's been my pleasure to live here for over twenty years and be a part of the Kenejo Valley. We have a major housing shortage here. I'm looking at the MLS right now. I've only got a hundred and fourteen open listings in the, in Newbury Park. Oh, by the way, I am from Newbury Park. Newbury Park, Thousand Oaks, and Westlake Village. So that's, that's just not enough homes for the people that need to live here and thrive in our community, fill up our businesses. And with all due respect, I challenge each of you to support this concept and see it through its development. Thank you very much for your service, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Crystal Evans, followed by Sister Lisa McGaffin.
Good evening, Mayor De La Peña and councilmembers. I am Crystal Evans, and I am a resident of Simi Valley. However, I am a business owner here in the Kenejo Valley. I own Kenejo Wards here in Thousand Oaks, and I'm also on leadership for the Kenejo Valley Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals Group, Emerging Leaders. Valley Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals Group, Emerging Leaders. And I just wanted to come on and express my support for this project and urge you to consider the importance of the additional workforce housing that this project can potentially provide for our community and the draw that it will have to bring in more young professionals into our area to continue to support and grow our local community and continue to support not only the small businesses that are hurting during this time, but also the various community organizations that we're, are all involved in and, you know, support as much as we can. And any additional support that we can bring in for them is a valued asset as well. And offering this type of housing and this mixed-use project will definitely attract more young professionals and just help stabilize the economy and help continue growth in the Thousand Oaks area. And also, a project like this could be an efficient use of our dwindling open space. So, I urge you guys to consider supporting this, and thank you very much for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. You as well. We have next up Sister Lisa McGaffin, and I believe she may be our last speaker. Good evening. I know Sister Lisa's in the waiting room here. I saw her. Sister Lisa, you need to unmute yourself.
I apologize. Good evening, Mayor Bill De La Peña and council members. My name is Sister Lisa McGaffin, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here this evening in support of Agenda Item 9A, and in particular, the 26 affordable units that are included in this plan. In my involvement with Many Mansions over the last 25 years, I've seen the crisis of inadequate low and very low-income housing absolutely explode. In fact, I can report that Many Mansions currently has a waiting list, and the waiting list is currently closed to additional registrants. So, the waiting list is more than 3,000 households, not just individuals' households. I found one point of the evaluation criteria particularly interesting. The question is, is this site suitable for residential use? And the response in the documentation is yes. What's also interesting to note that today, as the last Tuesday of January, would have been the annual homeless count mandated by HUD, but due to the pandemic, the homeless count was canceled. What's even more interesting and germane to our conversation is the following anecdote. During the homeless count three years ago, my partner and I met a homeless individual, actually on this very site. He had set up housekeeping, which included a recliner and several suitcases, and this was located at the top of the incline at the eastern section of this property. So, indeed, this site is suitable for residential use, but certainly not for the many homeless people who really tend to gravitate near that corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Moore Park Road. Further, I think this model of mixing low-income units very near adjacent to market rate units is a great step toward more inclusionary housing. We've heard tonight about diversity, inclusion, and equity. Well, this is a great step forward. And so, I encourage the council to adopt this resolution and initiate the general plan amendment and the next steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sister Lisa. We have two more speakers via video. First one is Lauren Lurch, and the last one, Jonathan Duran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I, my name is Lauren Lurch, and I am a resident of Simi Valley, but I am also a small business owner here in the city of Thousand Oaks. And I am coming on here this evening in support of Project 9A. We love the idea of having a mixed-use project that would also bring a lot of jobs to the community. Not only would it do that, but it would also support a lot of the other businesses that are struggling during this time and have done everything in their powers to remain open. I also have a business in New Hall in Ventura, and I've been able to see just the benefits of having mixed-use projects in those areas as well. So, I hope that you guys are able to listen to everybody and understand how many jobs would benefit from this, how many people would benefit from also the living circumstances. And thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jonathan Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Jonathan Duran. I'm a resident of Newbury Park. I've lived here now for about 10 years, raising my family, so it's a great place to have a family here. I'm not in support, I'm not against this project. My concerns are more on the construction end of it. A lot of, we're seeing right now is a lot of mixed-use development starting to go through the boulevard, per se, just like the Latigo Group and the Daly Group, just finishing up Lopez and the other project down the way, across the street from Transport Brewing Company. These projects are great. They're going to allow people to live in the area with a mixed-use design, but on the construction end, it is a lot of out-of-the-area workers, workers down from the San Fernando Valley and further. So, what that means to me is, the money that they're making on these projects, on the construction end, they're basically taking it out of our community. The whole idea for us is, hey, man, we work here, we want to build here, want to have the opportunity to work in our own backyard. But reality is that we do travel to go find work when we have to. But through Mill Creek, the developer that is going up for this pre-screening is, hey, we want to be able to come to the table and have a conversation with you about, hey, try to utilize some of the local tradesmen in the area to be able to utilize, local hire, have some type of agreement like that. Like I said, this is a great project that will bring that corner, a lot of, like I said, foot traffic and have a lot of opportunity for people to live there, low income and everything. But, again, from my, my point of view is to say, we want to make sure that if it is going to get built, try to utilize the local workforce, the local tradesmen, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. So, Mr. Duran was our last speaker. We have, we can go back to the applicant for rebuttal and then open it up for questions from the council. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and thank you to the community for your, your involvement tonight. And we are hearing the concerns, and if we're allowed to submit a formal application, we will work with you and the, and staff to respond to these concerns and requests. And we've heard, in particular, from the Climate Action speakers, to provide, you know, a LEED-certified building, which, you know, we are building to an environmental standard that meets and exceeds LEED-certified requirements. That is Mill Creek's approach to construction. They are also going to be including e-parking space and cogeneration on rooftops with solar. So, we appreciate the comments that we heard from the community about that, and we will be, as our plans develop, you'll see that we are committed to meeting those goals. And we just heard from the last speaker about local, using local trades, and we will certainly be looking at that with Mill Creek to, to try to make sure we keep jobs local where we can. We also heard the community is asking for affordable units. This project is providing affordable units. And we heard the need for workforce housing. This project is providing workforce housing. So, with that, we really ask you to give this project the push forward so that we can start, start the, the process to develop a plan that we all can be proud of and support. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I have nothing further, but should you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. There are questions, and we do have comments. And I believe that Councilmember Adam has something to say.
No, that's all right, Mayor. We're, we're just in the question period right now, correct?
Yeah, no, I saw that you turned off your microphone, so I assumed you wanted.
Inadvertent.
Okay, all right. Mr. Engler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but the, the feedback that we've heard tonight from our, our speakers was very, was, was very good speakers. I appreciate all the public and their input on this and their feedback to the developer. The one thing that I would like to give a little more feedback on is both the environmental side of things, having to make, to maximize the LEED aspect of things, and Mr. Cohen just mentioned that he would be doing that as well. But there's, there's one thing I think that, that we need really to look at, and the, the building is going to include it, but I'd like to maybe underscore the, the live-work units that will take away, you know, the, the need for people even leave their apartment to go to work. So, those, those are things that I would like to see, perhaps we increase in that as With that said, everybody else has covered most of the other items that I had on my list of things that I would recommend to the developer to, to enhance.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Mr. McNamie, did you have a comment? None? Okay. Mr. Jones, do you have a comment or question?
None? Okay. I do have a couple of questions for the applicant, that is. We, we, we understand that people who moved to Thousand Oaks, many of whom would like to set roots here in our community, and really, most families who are here in Thousand Oaks today are here because they find it to be a wonderful community that cares about community and would like to really set deep roots here. Apartments tend to be a good transition to ownership of single-family homes. However, the apartments which have been built thus far, most of the apartments have rent prices that are really, for lack of a better word, astronomical, and renters will require roommates in order to make ends meet. So, in order to provide true affordable housing and homeownership, is your client willing to entertain for-sale options of condos? Instead of this unlimited 71 units that I can't really wrap my head around? We hear from real estate, real estate agents quite a bit that we need to have entry-level single-family homes, of which there are not enough in the city of Thousand Oaks. And I'm looking to see whether we can provide lower-income-for-sale condos.
Thank you for your question, Madam Mayor. I, I can't speak to product type. We would probably ask Mr. Williams to weigh in on that, but I, I would say we are at such the early conceptual stage to commit or even, you know, to, I, I would say that everything is on the table for us to consider and think about. So, you know, Mr. Williams may disagree or have another opinion, and maybe we would ask him to, to weigh in, but I, I think it's, at this point, you know, the, the concept has been a rental product. That's what Mill Creek is good at doing, and, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take anything off the table at this point in time. I think it's really early, and, and we don't, we just don't have enough information at this point to, to, to commit to, to one direction or the other or a combination. But, you know, we are committed to providing affordable units, which we've talked about. You know, the, to estimate what rents are going to be four or five years from now is, you know, that's, that's probably the time when these, this product will be, you know, so long as we get through tonight and future entitlement processes and, and then, you know, drawing the plans that ultimately get built, or, you know, this is a long time away from, you know, sticks in the ground. So, but maybe Mr. Williams wants to add a comment here.
I would very much appreciate that, being that this is the highest-density project in the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
I think, Tom, thank you for that answer. You did a good job of representing our position. We certainly are open to considering anything. We're at a very early stage. The, the question of converting our application from a mixed-use community to a for-sale product at this time is certainly a new idea, but I, I can appreciate where Mayor Bill De La Peña is coming from, and we want to work with staff to put forward a project that both we and the city are proud of and look forward to the opportunity to.
Thank you. I didn't mean to imply that all of the units needed to be for sale, but was implying that perhaps some of the units could be for sale so that we can accommodate some of the entry-level single-family homeowners. I keep saying for every pre-screen that this is the most dense or excessive dense project, and I said that after the 12199 on Tio Boulevard, 299, I said it at Kmart, and now here I say it again. It seems that with every pre-screen, the density is becoming more excessive and more excessive and more excessive, and that is where I need to draw a line. We cannot continue to increase density with each project, especially this project being at 55 units per acre, if you include everything. I know I'm not supposed to, but if you do, that's what it is. So, if we're now at 55, I wonder, is the next density project or next high-density project, mixed-use project going to be 60 units per acre? Are we moving in that direction? That is not the path that I would like to be on. That said, are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues? For staff, perhaps? So far? Mr. McNamie.
Mayor, I think staff had a couple of responses.
Okay, I don't see any hands up.
Kelvin, go ahead.
Kelvin? Okay.
Thank you. Just a response to some of the comments from the public. Many of the speakers spoke about sustainability in various forms. This is an ideal time for that topic to come forward. We're in the midst of a general plan update. The sustainability element will be a huge part of that in the future. It'll cover everything that the public mentioned from building, sustainability from building form, design, energy efficiency. It'll help set goals and policies that relate specifically to sustainability. Sustainability is already something the city reviews for development projects through our standard process on a daily basis now. There were some comments from the public in regards to density. The density for the project that's proposed this evening is in compliance with the SB20 specific plan, and as it relates to affordability, the applicant has proposed to provide 26 affordable units in the very low category. That concludes staff's comments at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parker. I would like to actually go back on the sustainability point with the applicant, Mr. Cohen, or perhaps Mr. Williams. We have had these power shut-offs because of the high winds and wanted to avert any sort of fire disaster. So many residents, thousands of residents, were without power for up to three days in the city of Thousand Oaks. Would Mill Creek consider doing something along the lines of a solar microgrid sort of complex that would fulfill the goal of our GHG emissions and would address the points presented by the Climate Action Group?
Tom, I'll field that one, if you don't mind.
Tom, I'll field that one, if you don't mind. Let me start off by saying, the, the different speakers that brought forward environmental concerns, I think they're absolutely on point with what's going on in the environment right now. And any measures that can be taken to prevent the spread and growth of wildfires, like undergrounding overhead utility lines right now, I mean, those, those should be taken just out of a matter of good practice. Our current project design and building standards include a solar array on the roof of our buildings for cogeneration, as Tom alluded to. Additionally, the undergrounding of the power lines should, by the experts' reports to us, have pretty significant impacts for fire prevention and additional safety. Yeah, I, I think we have a big public outreach step that will immediately proceed, or immediately follow council's approval, should it be granted. And I, I took notes on some of the speakers, Roseanne and Catherine, and I think it'll be a great opportunity to follow up with them and work with them throughout the approval process, along with that city planning staff and other community stakeholders.
Thank you. All right. All right. Who had his hand up right now? Any of my colleagues? Did I see something? Mr. McNamie?
Madam Mayor, are we just asking questions right now?
We could be done with asking questions, and now start discussing it amongst ourselves. I think the staff has answered pretty much everything. Again, I still have an issue with these unlimited units. That's still, I'm not quite clear on why we reached the number 71, why it can't be lower than that.
Are you closing the public hearing then?
This is not a public hearing. This is a department report.
Oh, right, sorry. So are we moving on to discussion and/or motion?
If we could go back to Mr. Parker really quickly, why does it have to be 71 units in this unlimited space, rather than a much, much smaller number?
That number was derived from the commercial space that they're providing on the project. With the specific plan requirements, they do have the ability to add unlimited density above that. However, it's capped by the parameters of the specific plan in terms of generally the height, the setbacks, the whiffs, and things of that nature. That's an upper limit for that. The applicant may or may not build to that max cap of 71 identified in the staff report. It was specifically for the purpose of calculating the Measure E unit hit.
And this particular project, or parcel, I should say, is designated by our general plan currently as commercial, correct? It's not residential?
Commercial, residential per the specific plan. It does allow for this type of use to be built there. And this site was also designated as an opportunity site previously, which is part of the reason this project has moved forward to this stage.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Adam, it seems like you wanted to start the discussion.
Yes, if I may, thank you, Mayor. I just will start out by reminding my fellow council members that this is a pre-screen. We're voting tonight on starting a process. We're not voting on the project per se. We're asked to give guidance to the builder, not asking for commitments. And, and I have to say, with all due respect, I shy away from terms like excessive density. I think that's a subjective term. Density is, is a relative term. And we will be tasked in the, in the coming months, in fact, to apply objective standards to developments that appear in front of us. So with that said, I, just a couple of quick general comments. You know, we're a big city, 56 square miles, 15,000 acres of open space. And we pretty much sprawled out to the edge of that open space. And for many years, we never really had a real city center. We have challenges in our, in our city center, which we're working on. Certainly, the Boulevard is a challenge. It's four lanes. It's got a median in the middle, parking on either side. It's really seven lanes, right through the heart of the city. It's linear. There's no grid system to build from. So it's been a challenge to build a city center. The specific plan came along 10 years ago. I think it's a great plan. Calls for walkable, pedestrian friendly projects with a mix of uses, and that will catalyze more amenities along the Boulevard. And finally, after 10-plus years, we're slowly starting to realize that, that plan. 1710, the Old Lupis Project, as one of the speakers mentioned, incredible interest. Yeah, it's, it isn't even done yet, and it's already pre-leased. So there, I think, and I'm hoping we're going to see this, I'm sure we'll see the same for 299 in the west end of the city. So people want to live in our downtown. They want to live there. And that's where our community wants people to move to, according to our Community Attitude Survey. This is important. It provides a consumer base to our, to our merchants on the Boulevard, and they are obviously struggling now with COVID. It's, this is almost like a COVID relief plan, really. I liked one of the speakers that said, and she listed all the businesses around there and gave this a 71 on the walk scale. To give you a perspective on that, my home in the suburbs is a nine. I'm not near anything. You know, I gotta get my car to go everywhere. There's not a bus stop in sight. This is a whole different ballgame, but, and this is what we're after, an environmentally friendly project that's walkable. I'll just say that, and, and this, I really appreciate all the environmental comments. I think they're great. You know, we need to live up to AB 32, the greenhouse gas bill that was passed with Fran Pavly's help. And SB 375, this says cities need to build in infill projects in the interior of the city and stop sprawling outward. We're way past the sprawl stage at this point. We want people to live and to work in Thousand Oaks. We want to lower the vehicle miles traveled, the VMTs, bring down the greenhouse gases. I read a study just recently from the, let's see, it was called the National Personal Transportation Survey. It said, "Project like this lowers vehicle trips by 40%." And considering 60% of the city moves in and out every day, commuting on freeways to get in and out of Thousand Oaks to work here, we need to cut that down. And a project like this will do that. A project like this will do that. And, and at this point, you know, the, the good thing is, we, we have control. We have say in how this will turn out. Further down the road, as has been pointed out to us many times, with the general plan update, land, land use element, all those things that are coming, we, we may lose some of that control. So let's exercise the control we have now to make sure this is a good project. The benefits are, are many, many benefits. I particularly like the very low income affordable housing. We're, we're light on that. We need it. Putting the power lines down, the connectivity, to bring, breathe life into the west end of the Boulevard. I mean, for years, that, that area was just inert, if, for lack of a better word. We're saving the trees. I, I can't tell you how many businesses have said, "Please build some housing so I can attract some employees." The big companies like Amgen, Skyworks, they all say the same thing. They want young professionals to come into the area. And I think that this offers that opportunity. So I, again, we're just starting the process here, and I think there's plenty of merit here to get that process started. So with that, I think you can obviously see that, oh, I, I, and just let me say, on a wish list basis, if we could squeeze a little more affordable out, that's always a plus. I would certainly be in favor of that. And let's not overlook the commercial side of it. I understand commercial is a, a challenge right now, but if it's purposeful retail, I want to see people be able to stay on site and be able to walk and not get in their cars, not to mention, if anything else, routes up around there. And I really like what the young man said about hiring local. Let's try to do that as well. I think that, that makes a lot of sense. So obviously, you can see where I'm going with this. I want to move that we grant the units out of the bank, the 235 units, and the general plan amendment. And I think we are off to a very good start here, and I look forward to seeing this project develop in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Any other comments? Mayor Pritam Engler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the reason we're here tonight is just to try to look and see, is this an appropriate location to put housing? And I think, in my way of thinking, this is, this is an appropriate place to put housing. And, and a mixed use format, which is, which is great. The project, just in terms of the way that it's been presented so far, seems to check a lot of the boxes. As you know, Madam Mayor, I'm very much interested in protecting our oak trees down, down in, that remain in our, our town. This project protects those oak trees, in fact enhances them, puts them into a, a landscape that will allow those trees to be managed and to be cared for. The added units that we're going to get, the affordable units, that will help address the, the ability of people in the workforce be able to live in the city that they, they, they work in, is very important to me. The undergrounding those wires, set aside the, the aesthetic side of, of getting those wires out of there. It's the safest, as was pointed out earlier, it's the safest way to transmit the electricity, but also the most safe way to protect us from any dropped lines, a Mylar balloon that may fly up into them. All that is important. This undermine, underlining those, undergrounding those will take away all those things. But most importantly, I think in my mind, the project offers us the ability to bring a concentration of people to the Boulevard that will enhance the west end of the Boulevard in terms of, of business, but also will, will give people the ability to live and work and shop by foot. The other, today I had to take a drive down to the Boulevard. From my house, it was a round trip of nine miles. Now, in, in the big scheme of things, is that a ton of, of greenhouse gas production? No, it isn't. But for me, to not have to do that, multiplied by the number of people we could have living in the Boulevard and walking to and from different things, then now we're starting to make a difference in our greenhouse gas production. These types of projects, I believe, are extremely important for our ability to help our, our environment and our climate. So with all those boxes checked, I think, I think we are in a position where this project should go forward. Allow Mill Creek, which I thank them for taking an interest in Thousand Oaks. It's always nice to see people who want to invest in our community. But allow them to come to us with a, with a concrete set of plans that we can take a further look at, have staff adjust it as needed, but also allow us to approve it or not approve it sometime down the line here. I think they've gotten our, our, our input. They are going to take that input, not only from us, but from the, our public, and make a very nice project for us that checks all the boxes that we would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Mr. Jones?
Yes. You know, I hate to be out of step with the other council members, because I admire them all, and I respect their judgment. And maybe it's because I've been here a long time, and it's hard for me to get my mind around putting a lot of apartments on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Since I've been on the council, we've approved a lot of apartments out in two projects in Newbury Park. We gave a green light to a very large project at the old Kmart site. We're in the process of having two projects on the Boulevard completed. And I think we're developing two societies in Thousand Oaks, renters and homeowners. I liked what you said, Madam Mayor, when you asked about maybe having this a condo project, where a person could get a little stake in homeownership, and then go on to something better. If you pay rent all your life, you never do that, of course. And, you know, maybe that's going to be the way for the future. I, you know, even from my length of time here, and having been on an earlier plan many years ago. And so I have it kind of stuck in my mind that the Thousand Oaks Boulevard wasn't designed for this. If I may bring a little sociological note into this, I've done extensive walking door to door. I avoid apartment houses, because very few people are ever registered there. So that tells me if they, and I have not done a scientific study, so, you know, I'm not George Gallup or somebody, but from years and years of canvassing the city, I've come to the conclusion that renters are not registered to vote as a group. And, and that tells me they're not awfully interested in civic affairs. If you would excuse me, one little reading here. I, I'm currently teaching a class at Pierce College, and I found in my textbook, I think teachers probably ought to read the textbook. So if you don't, if you bear with me, I haven't said anything before tonight. You know, for me to go three and a half hours without talking is probably some, you can ask my wife, that's probably some record. But I would like to just read one short paragraph from this textbook. And they're talking about the concept of civic life. "We all live in communities in which we participate in a wide range of activities with our neighbors. We attend school board meetings. Some of us attend church services together. We play softball and neighbor, with neighborhood friends and our siblings. They may attend scout meetings with others. These relationships make up civic life. The constellation, constellation of relationships that keep us connected with others and make our communities vital places in which to live and work. By voluntarily participating in civic life, we build what is called social capital, bonds of trust and reciprocity between citizens that form the glue, holding society together." I'll stop there. But my point is that I think we, and I may be wrong, you know, I don't claim to be all knowing, but I think we're building two societies here. The homeowners who, as we all know, take an interest in civic life, they participate in all sorts of things. I think we probably have the best camaraderie of homeowners of any place I've ever lived. And we can see evidence of all the things that have been done together. So it's a little, goes against my thinking to all of a sudden, convert everything to apartments in this town. I think that, I may be wrong, but I, I don't like the sociological implication. So I'm not prepared to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. McNamie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My getting to know many of the people here in Thousand Oaks, both formal and informal surveys, this is split pretty much 50/50 as to what should be done on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, whether it be mixed use, high density, commercial only, residential only. There's a lot of mixed reviews out there, and it splits down 50/50 pretty much from what I've seen out there. There's advantages to this program, to what the developer proposes. And the developer's done a very good job mapping out the vision of what they'd like to do. Increase sales tax for the city, which is where our primary income source is to run the city, by bringing in approximately 500 more people. You're going to have increased property taxes. We have jobs in the in, front stage, which would be under construction. But you also have the services that go in to support those construction jobs. And then after the construction is completed, we have the people using the other services that are both walkable and drivable within the city. Power lines going underground is a community benefit, and it's a very generous offer on the part of the builder. But that also needs to keep kept in mind, that also increases the cost of housing by the builder having to do that. They're going to have to get their money back for doing such a service to the community. Then we have lowered greenhouse gases. That's a wonderful benefit also to this, because we hope people would walk to the various services we have in the areas compared to driving outside the city for them. However, people still will not necessarily have jobs within the city. They may be driving to Camarillo or to Pasadena, and, and they still need a vehicle. But it would reduce some of the use of their vehicle to go use those local services, like the grocery stores and so forth that are in the area. Disadvantages of this program I see is increased traffic on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. When surveys- When surveys are done and I speak to the people in the community, that's one of the biggest complaints of the increased traffic that's existing in our community. There's also an increased parking problem, even though the planner has suggested that we can address that. You know, when you assign 1.6 parking places for a one-bedroom apartment, when you know you're going to have two cars there, many of them are going to be parking on the street. We also hope the residents will actually use the services and the businesses in the area and walk to them. That's something that we'll have to see if that actually takes place. And to the mayor's point, which is a good one, this is really high-density. This is a lot of people in a small, little space, a lot of cars going in and out, a lot of people there. Now, the developer up to this point has spent a great deal of funds to develop it to this point, working with the city, developing plans. Once, if it is approved by council today, you're looking at architectural costs into your design costs, work with the city, permits, fees. You also have a carrying cost going forward that many people aren't aware of, that once you break ground, it's about five years before it's completed, there are costs every second of every day that that construction takes place. So there's a heavy cost moving forward if the council approves this plan that I'm very much aware of. Thousand Oaks is a desirable community. This is why people want to live here. Our residents care about their families, they care about their neighbors, they care about the community. That's what makes us unique. What also makes us unique is having those vistas that we enjoy, the parks that are so well taken care of, the green belt that's around us, the bike lanes, the ability to move around the city in a few moments to get to what you need to. That's what makes Thousand Oaks so desirable, and that's what I'd like to maintain with anything I do here on council. Yes, I am pro-jobs. I am also pro-development, but it's got to be in the right area. So I yield back my time to the mayor and look forward to the final vote. Thank you.
Very well stated. Thank you. I would like to ask a couple of questions of the applicant, since this is not a public hearing, I can actually go back. I wanted to ask the following. The council, we have two council members who are completely embracing this, and then we have one opposed, two more or less on the fence. I would like to hear from either Mr. Cohen or from Mr. Williams, yes, about, which is a question I asked of a previous applicant regarding building height and the density. And yes, I will call it excessive density because so far in the general plan designation, high-density is considered anywhere from 15 to 30 units per acre, and this far exceeds that. And because it exceeds that, I call it excessive density. It's not really subjective, it's not even relative, it's just simply a fact. So I would like to know, I need to know from the developer tonight, that no waiver will be given or requested to exceed building height, and also to reduce the number of units without reducing the number of affordable units.
Clayton, you want me to handle that?
Sure. I was, yeah, go ahead.
You've got thoughts you want to start with? Go ahead and I'll follow.
Well, I'm sort of trying to parcel out the question. I think the question was, will we comply with SB 20's design guidelines in connection with height and density? And that is our plan. That has been our intent from day one, and we will work with city staff as soon as we're afforded the opportunity to do so.
Okay, so we do have specific height restrictions in SB 20. You will not ask to exceed those?
I'm sorry, I think that's what I stated.
Okay. And you will not reduce the number of affordable units? You will perhaps increase it, as was the desire by Councilmember Adam, and the rest of the council really, the more affordable, the better?
Certainly something we're happy to study.
Okay. And you will also consider for-sale options, maybe just a couple of units or so, but you will, as you stated previously, consider that to afford or to provide affordable homeownership?
Absolutely. Happy to look into it.
The density at this time is not something that I can support. It is really extremely high. I think what we're all trying to reach here is the very difficult balance between providing what several employers want, what perhaps some millennials want, but at the same time not risking the charm and character of the city of Thousand Oaks. We don't want to go down the path of Santa Monica, which is now doing 180-degree turn in terms of development, where they have become self-fed up with the overdevelopment there. Certainly, I don't want Thousand Oaks to become the next Santa Monica. Therefore, I need to have these guarantees tonight that no waivers will be issued to exceed height, that the affordability will increase, and that the for-sale option will also be considered.
You've heard from Mr. Williams, we've committed to those three things that you've outlined.
Very good. Okay. Mr. McNamie, does that address your concerns?
Well, you answered some of the questions.
Pardon me?
I heard what he said.
Okay. So they will not seek a waiver for building height? In other words, they will keep within what is of the specific plan, which is no more than three stories, no more than 50 feet?
Let me share with you some economic concepts here real quick, if I may.
I know what you're going to say.
You know, again, I was just going to go to a vote here at this point. If you want more comment from me, I'm a professor at the college, I can talk forever. I think Jones can do the same. What do you want me to say here at this point? I mean, I'm waiting for a vote. If you want me to comment how economically what's being asked of them may price this out of the market and actually make it less affordable for the apartments that are being proposed here by requiring some of these things of them. But I don't need to go into that at this point. I'd like to just move to the vote at this stage if no one else has any other comment at this stage.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I made the motion, so I believe I can have the last comment. Can I not?
You know, I've been here 18 years. I think you can, from what I remember.
Thank you. Thank you. I just ask my colleagues to keep things in perspective. When you, we're talking about the Boulevard here, only the Boulevard, and give or take a couple of units over the last 10 years, I think we, or over the last couple of years, we've okayed 176 units of apartments on the Boulevard. That's it. 176, on a three-mile stretch. So, and you know how much residential is on the Boulevard right now? Probably maybe 1%. So please, let's not overplay that we're over-residenting, if that's a word, the Boulevard, okay? And this concept of renters as second-class citizens, that young man that came and spoke to us today is a renter, I believe, and he's very involved with the community, as we all had seen. And I just reject that notion absolutely completely, especially with a project like this, there'll be a strong sense of community because of all the amenities, because the mixture of uses. People are going to get to know each other, people are going to get involved in the community. There's open spaces, walkability. Yeah, maybe an old-time apartment complex might have had its challenges, but this is not what we're talking about here, okay? This is not what we're talking about. And as far as traffic goes, I don't know about you guys, but when my girls were here, I had four cars on the property. And everywhere I look on my street, my neighbor's got five cars, this guy's got four cars, three cars. These people don't have that amount of cars. So I think we'll find out, and I think traffic's going to be much less than you suspect, also considering the fact that the Boulevard is four lanes and has a level of service of A throughout almost the entire Boulevard. I think the Boulevard can handle it. All right? And finally, this, okay, so we were going to become the San Fernando Valley, but now we're going to become Santa Monica. Santa Monica is eight square miles, okay? We're 56. Santa Monica has 12,000 people per square mile. We have 2,000. Santa Monica has building heights that go from 13 stories up to 23 stories, okay? We're not going to become Santa Monica, and I really think that kind of a comparison is off the mark and misleading and designed to, I don't know, is designed to evoke some kind of a reaction in people, okay? Please, let's not compare us to Santa Monica. Santa Monica is an urban city. 23 stories, the tallest building there. Our tallest building is like three, maybe four somewhere. Anyway, back to my original motion, appreciate all the comments, especially appreciate the speakers tonight, very incisive, very informative, really well-informed people. So the original motion stands, and I guess I'll repeat it, that we, in fact, grant the 235 units from Measurie Bank, and that we, that we go ahead with the general plan amendment and start the process, start the process. And I'm sure the builder has listened to all our comments and will take those into consideration if this process is allowed to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam. I'm so glad you got all of that off your chest tonight.
Yes, I am too.
Yep, very good. So we, as we know from previous experience, the
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
I was trying to, I hope Mr. Adam wasn't referring to my remark.
Yes, he was.
When he made the statement that renters are second-class citizens.
Yes, he was.
That may be his idea, that's not my idea. I think renters are fine people, I just don't think they have the same level of community interest as the homeowners do. And I resent that remark, Mr. Adam.
Yeah, Mr. Adam, as I said, was a little peeved at that. Anyhow.
Well, you know, Mr. Jones has used that theme more than once about renters not being engaged or involved in the community. And I don't believe that.
That may very well be the case. We all are entitled to our opinions, and we don't need to disparage other council members because they have a different opinion.
Meant no disparagement, only meant to comment on what I heard.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Adam. Mr. Engler?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. These side comments have nothing to do with our topic at hand. I would encourage us not to digress into other areas here and we'll stay on topic.
Thank you very much. That was the plan all along, but doesn't always pan out that way. So we have a motion before us, and directions were given to the developer. I just wanted to mention that during a different hearing or meeting, directions were given to the applicant, and it took a considerable amount of time and working on tweaking things here and there in order to elicit what was actually recommended by the council. So whatever is being recommended tonight needs to be taken to heart because by the applicant, because when it comes before any other legislative body or advisory body, and the recommendations and guidance by the council are not heeded, then ultimately that particular project will fail. I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember McNamie?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Bob Engler? Mr. Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No, I did hear you. I'm still thinking. So much was said tonight, and I learned my lesson from various different and various projects in the past where, in the end, we don't always get what we want. I don't want to be cheerleader for excessive density at all, at all. And this is excessive density. So I'm appealing to the developer right now that if the numbers of units don't come down, and if the height doesn't come down, and if affordable units are not increased, I will very likely not vote for this project when it comes before the city council. But for tonight, I will greenlight it very, very, very reluctantly. Would you like to announce the vote?
Yes. The motion passes 3-2 with
Thank you.
Councilmembers McNamie and Jones dissenting.
And please, Mr. Adam, I know you don't agree with everybody, but we don't need to get into any sort of comments criticizing our fellow council members. I would appreciate it if you refrain from that in future meetings. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your admonishment. However, I really stated facts, refuting some of the assertions that I heard.
Okay. Nonetheless, Mr. Adam.
Tell me if I didn't. Everything I said about the city of Santa Monica is absolutely true.
Mr. Adam, Mr. Adam. Mr. Adam, point of order, Mr. Adam. We now move on to item number, I believe it is 11. We don't have anything there, but we now have item number 12, and that is city council issues and recommendations. And that, I believe, is actually going to be done by me. Let me see. Yes. Okay. So council members in front of you, you have the proposed assignments for 2021 for the various committees. Did you all have a chance to look at those? So I assume that everybody had a chance to look at them, all right? And if there are no further questions, we could vote on those. Madam Clerk?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill DeLaPeña?
Yes.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much. We don't have any follow-up reports. Do we have any follow-up items from our city manager, Mr. Powers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bill DeLaPeña, just briefly. Our next meeting will be on the 9th of February, and currently shaping up for that evening, we have our department report on wastewater billing shift to the county property tax rule. We have a grant agreement with CRPD for the expansion of the teen center gym that has been a capital project for some time. And as I mentioned at the outset, we will have the next in a line of pre-screams that will be forthcoming. And this one will be in regard to a project at the lakes.
Another one. Okay, so with that, I believe we are done for the evening. We do have a closed session, which needs to be announced by Tracy Noonan, our city attorney, and after that, we will adjourn. Go ahead, Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one closed session tonight, a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, Allison Piazza versus Tony Ravelas pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9A. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned to our next meeting on February 9th, and I hope you all enjoyed our inaugural Community Commitment Award with Wilbert Uck, because he embodies what grace is, what love one another is all about, and coming from poverty and having had a life that involved crime, it was really very refreshing to see that. And he is what we love about the city of Thousand Oaks. So with that, So with that, thank you all very much. Looking forward to seeing the next winner of the Community Commitment Award. Have a nice evening. And for you to wear your mask.